So we're going to get started with today's meeting at 7:05. And our first, this is our town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, November 13th. Starting at 7:05 and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started, I want to tell you, I'm dealing with different ear things. So if I touch myself, I apologize. The election, I want to sit there and, you know, thank everyone for participating. We had great turnout. It was, it's good to see the community come out and vote. Anne Kremay, congratulations on being coming a member of the Board of Selectmen. But I will sit there and tell you, you have big fills, shoes to fill. Adrian Mandeville was a very productive member of this board. He helped us through a lot of the issues and I don't think the community understood this board and its makeup as to how it was. You know, you have someone from public relations, someone from, Jeff, is it mechanical engineering or electrical engineer? Electrical.
Electrical, come on.
Scott Persson, forestry background. Adrian, construction and myself, accounting. And in this being the last board meeting for the previous board, I do want to let the public understand that this was a very good board and we got a lot done. And while Anne, I'm happy that you're joining us, I'm very sad to see Adrian go. So I'm letting everybody know that. All right, we will move on to public speak. Oh, and by the way, before I even move on to that, we're going to do everything possible to keep Adrian involved in this community in this town. He does add a lot of value. So I hope the other members of the board are all aware, I'm making you aware that any opportunity we can to keep Adrian involved, we will. All right, public speak, let's start with applauseies. Kathy, Mike.
For me.
I do, I have something.
Sure.
I wanted to say congratulations to our Board of Selectmen on the reelection and for another four years. And I want to welcome Anne to the Board of Selectmen and say to Anne that, well, I was going to use your terminology, Jeff, but I decided to skip that. I want to say that you're now a member of an excellent committee representing our town residents. So good luck again and good luck to all four, four others of you.
Thanks Kathy. Elaine Bucar.
Kathy.
I just want to say that I'm encouraged to see that we're looking at RFPs for a, for a plan for the multi-use connector path to connect 316 rail trail, the new community center, town hall, school. It's, it's been a long time coming, but it's really exciting to see that, you know, money's being put out there. And now we're going to have pen to paper and some plans to go ahead and look at. So that's exciting. Also, the Andover Farmers Market, unfortunately Amanda Gibson, after several years of very hard work and what I thought looked to be a very successful market has stepped down. So we are now market, market master list again. So that puts us back in, in our court, Kathy, for the EDC that we now have to go searching for new market masters. Maybe you and Mike want to do it again. That would be very cool. But anyway, just to kind of put it out there, we're, we're going to be in search of a market master to go ahead and regroup and, and do a market next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Elaine, for all your efforts and Amanda's done a great job replacing Mike and I. Remember she had to replace two people. She's done a great job and we've supported her wholeheartedly. And I am sorry to have heard that she will be stepping down, but I'm sure Elaine, with all the enthusiasm that you have, you'll find someone.
Okay, Diane Granier, thank you Elaine.
Yeah, hello. I too would like to congratulate all the, the, the new Board of Selectmen here and also all the other people that participated in the election, whether they won or not, all the other boards and commissions that needed to be filled. That, that's a tough job to do. Throw your, your hat in the ring and take the abuse that some of you take. All for, no thanks many times and it's a lot of hard work and I appreciate it. And I think most of the residents in Andover also thank you and appreciate all, all that you do. Not like I say, not only this board, but all the boards and commissions in town. So thank you all.
Eric, before I go on, I'll just go, I know if Community Voice know, Brian Avery is going to speak on the Joshua Trust issue, correct?
Correct, as will John, who's John Hankins.
Bill Penn.
I have nothing to say in this section here also because of for the Joshua Trust section.
So yeah, and this is John Hankins. I'll do, I think I'll do the primary speaking for this one. I'm the president.
Okay, no problem. It's not right now, John, it's this public speak. So I just wanted to verify who I needed to ask. Carly's iPhone.
Hi, that's me.
Hi.
We're here, um, we just moved to Andover and we live at 554 Lake Road. Our neighbor told us.
Daryl.
Daryl, yeah, but what about the, like, what's it called?
You guys own 15 feet of our driveway and there's a catch basin.
That will be up for discussion later, so.
Okay.
Stick around.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Joanne Ebert.
Thanks Jeff. I just wanted to echo congratulations to everyone that was recently elected in the, you know, on all the boards, wishing them all the best going forward. And I'd be remiss to not also, you know, say a nice word about Adrian too. It's been, I've been involved the last maybe four years and I do go to a lot of the meetings. So it's nice when you see a board that's made up of all, you know, they bring something so unique to the table. So watching all the Board of Selectmen meetings that I've been lucky enough to watch or listen to so that I could get information. Each person on this board had a unique place on it and a lot of expertise that was shared with the town. So we've been really, really lucky. So, you know, I know that maybe each person is unique and not for everyone. Definitely having worked behind the scenes with Adrian on a, you know, a few matters and committees. I know he, he gave his all to the town and, you know, with, you know, not looking for any praise and, and so I just think he needs to get his just due as well. So good luck to everybody. Good luck to Anne joining and, you know, continued good work.
Thank you. And Eric, I'm going to clarify this with you. Is this, has the new board been seated? It has not been seated, correct?
It has not been seated. It will be official as of the 21st.
Okay, Anne Kremay, public speak. Mute.
You're on mute.
We can hear you.
So Anne, I, I apologize because I have computer problems as well. Had to fix that one.
Anne, you might try logging out and logging back in and see whether that clears it. Sometimes that works.
Anne, we'll come back to you once you get audio. Okay, all right. So let's get started. Additions and deletions to the agenda. Does any of the members have anything they want to add? Paula King.
Yep, I've got an addition. Can we please add under old business, item H, Andover's Finest?
Okay, anyone else?
Jeff, I have two. Delete item 16B, which is the discussion revolving the King property boundary line, because that's going to be Thursday's special meeting. And I would also consider deleting 11D, which is appointment to CIP and Senior Center Committee. And I would postpone that one one month.
Okay, and I see Andover's Finest is in executive session. So we need to remove that from executive session and put it 10H, please.
Okay. Jeff, anything?
No, I have nothing tonight.
Scott, anything extra, anything you want deleted?
Nothing, no.
All right. So the motion on the table is to delete 16C from executive session Andover's Finest and move it to old business, item H, Andover's Finest. And we're deleting 11D appointments to CIP and other committees and delete item 16B, the King Property Boundary Line Discussion. I'll make the motion that we do those. I know Paula did part of it and Eric did part of it, but I'll make that motion. Paula, you want to second that?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so let's get moving on this. We have.
Jeff, Anne's back on, do you want to?
Anne, can, can you try your audio? Still no.
Nope, no audio.
I had the same problem Jeff tonight, so they must've did an update on Zoom.
I, I did as well. My Mac, my Mac microphone wasn't working. So Anne, just as a suggestion, what I had to do is run around and find a pair of earphones that might connect into the computer. If you have any headphones or something like that, okay.
And if you're using an external mic, you might want to unplug the USB from the back of your PC because that's what fixed mine.
Okay. All right, Anne, we'll come back to you if you get it fixed. So we're going to move on to item four, the Treasurer's Report. Eric, is there anything specific that you want to call out to us?
No, the only thing that's really in the packet is the interim budget or the current budget versus actual. The check register is not in the packet. The Treasurer is working away, trying to get the audit ready, making good progress on that.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions regarding that information?
Nope.
Okay. Just as a side, Eric, has the reconciliation of the TAR account been provided? And can you at least provide us that information for the next meeting?
Of which account, Town Aid Road?
Town Aid Road, yeah.
Okay.
The reconciliation that was being performed.
Okay.
All right. Well, we'll move on to item five, Board and Commission Presentations. Eric, do we have anything related to that? Oh, and I apologize, Dennis O'Brien, I want to say hello to you. I know you're on the call.
Hello.
All right. Board and Commission Presentations, is there anything that's required?
Uh, no, not at this time. You had asked at the last meeting for a summary of what members were appointed and what all the terms were. And Carol put that together and that is in your packet. But there's nothing at this very moment. The only one was a nomination to the Norton Fund condition, but that's been taken for commission. But that's been taken care of, so there is no action at this time.
Okay. Uh, well, we'll have to thank Carol related to that. That's very helpful. We'll try to put that into a little bit different format. So maybe the boards and any future boards can have this information easily accessible, so we know what we need to do on a consistent basis. Okay. Item six, any appointments?
There are no appointments or resignations at this point.
Nothing for, nothing for item seven. Item eight, discussion with Joshua's Trust with the potential for the Skinner Hill Preserve.
Okay, and at this time I would like to introduce the President of Joshua's Trust, who is John Hankins. And I will turn this discussion over to him. And if you would like, I can put the proposed map up on the screen if that makes your life easier. Other than that, it's, it's your presentation, John.
Yeah, Eric, that, that would be helpful if you put that up because I will refer to it. So thanks, everybody, for giving us a few minutes on your agenda. I'll try to be quick. I know this was on the agenda last month, we had to postpone it, but Eric has indicated you talked about it a little bit. So this won't be completely new to you. But Joshua's Trust, as you might know, operates in approximately 14 towns in the area. We haven't been that active in Andover in the past, but we did get the opportunity earlier this year to acquire 32 acres of property on Skinner Hill Road. And we are now the owners of that property. That was transferred to us by the Manchester Land Trust that had owned it for several years. And they spun it off to us really because they wanted to focus on their specific area, which is Manchester. And Joshua's Trust is much more regional. We've, we've looked at this property, it's 32 acres. And although it's not enormous, it does have, have some potential for open space and recreation in the form of a low-impact trail. As we started looking at that a little bit more, we realized that there were two big challenges if we wanted to make this property available to the residents of the town of Andover. The first one is that there's really no parking. If you look at the map, the, the green area is the preserve itself. And if you look at where it intersects Skinner Hill Road on the top, it's only got about 10 or 20 feet of frontage, something like that. Certainly not enough to park a car. The other challenge we were faced with is that right smack dab in the middle of the property, there's a pretty good sized wetland. And that would largely prevent without an extreme level of effort, a trail that would run from north to south through the property. You're probably aware, the blue on that map is town of Andover open spaceland that you own because of the Route 6 Expressway transfer to the town a couple of years back. We looked at these two properties together. And if they are considered together, if there was a collaborative effort between the town and Joshua's Trust, we believe we could put something here pretty, that would be pretty attractive and useful to the residents of the town. That would include two primary components to make it happen. The first one would be a parking area on Skinner Hill Road on town land at the location of a former residence that was located. It's a fairly overgrown lot today. That would be, need to be cleared and, and smoothed out. We're talking about typically our, our properties have room for somewhere between four and six cars. They're generally pretty, the preserves we have are generally pretty low use, anywhere from, you know, a handful of people a week to maybe 20 or 30 people a week. They're pretty low use. You can see we've, you can see the red line on that map shows that the proposed trail, which is a solid red line, traverses land owned by both Joshua's Trust and the town. It's, it starts, if you look at the line on the left, it swings into a sort of a ledgy area that's on the property owned by Joshua's Trust and then it hooks over to town land primarily to avoid a, a large wetland that's on, that's on the Joshua's Trust property. Then it swings back on a Joshua's Trust property and loops around and takes a high route that's completely in town of Andover land back to the parking area. I have not measured that specifically, but I would guess that's perhaps half a mile to two thirds of a mile around. Another interesting feature that we're not necessarily proposing at this point, I show a dash line at the bottom. This property, the town property actually connects through to Wheeling Road. So if it was the town, in the town's interest, that trail could be extended to all the way to Wheeling Road and potentially make a connection someday to the Nathan Hale Forest. This would be a pedestrian-only trail, no bikes, no horses in general. You're too sensitive for that. The maintenance of the trail would be, would be done both on town land and on Joshua's Trust land by a steward. And Bill Penn is on the line tonight and he's the person that we've got in mind as the steward for this property. We own about 40 properties or we own about 70 properties and about 40 of those have trail systems. So we, we've done this quite a few times before and we are, are pretty good with the maintenance portion of this. One, the one other item that's in the ask column, the town property itself, there's a fair amount of debris, things like tires and vehicle parts, I would say. Just various pieces of, various pieces of automotive debris. What we're proposing there, because that is, that is town land and that junk that's on that property is on town property today. We would like to collaborate with the town to clean that up. And what we've got in mind there is that the town, this is an idea, it's open for discussion. The town would supply a dumpster and we would use Joshua's Trust volunteer support, perhaps with some, some help from volunteers from the town to basically pick up, to the extent we can, tires and other debris, put them in the dumpster and then the town would be responsible for disposal. So those are the three asks that we've got tonight to locate a trail that spans both Joshua's Trust and town open space property for the benefit of the residents of the town and, and your visitors. Second, to put this part, the, the parking area, the looped trail and then the removal of the debris. Those are the three things. If the town is interested in doing with us, this with us, we'd love to implement this in the spring. If you're not so interested, we simply can leave this property as, as open space conservation land and there, there likely would not be a trail, a trail in it at all. So that's, that's our offer and I'm interested to hear whether the board is interested in pursuing such a thing.
All right, thank you very much for the, the information. Does any of the members of the board have any comments related to this? I personally think it would be a, a positive idea for the town. It would be a use of land that is, nothing's going to occur there really from other than a passive recreation standpoint. But it's a question of, is it the right use for it? And does it impact any of the other residents in any negative way? So Jeff, I know you probably have been out there and walked this, so what is your take?
Yeah, I've been out there numerous times and I know what John is referring to by the junk piles that are down there. It's, it's, it's significant. I mean, my only concern is that I've been hiking in there a bunch. It's, I mean, I own, you know, my house is on the bottom left-hand corner down towards the bottom of Wood Fern Way. And I mean, right now I can't even bring my tractor across my grass because the area is so wet and the trails, the, the land back there is very marshy. So it's, it's difficult to try to really put a sustainable trail in there. And like John said, it's, it's going to be closed to mountain biking because if bikes go through there, it's just going to be a rutted mess. So I'm kind of torn between, you know, putting the trail there or not. It's, it has nothing to do with my proximity to the, to the land. But we have, we've had a standing issue lately with trying to maintain the trails that we have. I mean, the ones in the back of the elementary school, it's, it's continually overgrowing. And you know, it's just, we're having a hard time trying to get volunteers to keep those trails clean. And it just brings, it brings in the point of, we have Creaser Park nearby, less than a mile away with a big trail network. We have Nathan Hill State Forest, it has about 15 miles of trails. We have, you know, the, the rail trail down, right down the street. We have Bishop Swamp and then we have the property behind the, the, the elementary school. So I'm just, I'm questioning whether we're going to, it's going to get that much use. And if it's, if it's going to be a sustainable trail or not. So those are, those are my concerns. We have a ton of recreational trail opportunities in town. I would like to see some more, you know, volunteer effort maintaining those trails that we do have. And I know Bill Penn's offering to, to maintain this one, but I'm just wondering if it's a good fit for that property. That's all.
Scott, I am sure you have some history with this property. So what is your take?
Um, you know, I feel the same way Jeff Murray does. This is, this trail's not going to be in my backyard, so I'm just going to go with um, his feelings on it because I have a trail in my backyard and sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. But it is very wet through there. I've been through there a lot. I went through there with Eric, trying to mark the boundary lines down in there. And, and it is a pretty wet spot, but if, I would not be, I'm not against having trails in there per se, but you know, it, it has more to do with than what I feel like, you know, the neighbors, Jeff Murray is going to be impacted by this. And it is a wet area, but you know, it would be good if it was used for something, I think.
Paula?
Um, maybe, maybe these are obvious answers, but I'm just trying to decide based on what Scott and, and Jeff are saying. So I see, I see what Jeff's saying about our, the, our existing trails are overgrown, right? So if we, if we go with this and it's not taken care of, what's, so the downfall is it just doesn't get used, right? What, what's, can somebody explain to me the absolute downfalls to the town and to the residents? So it doesn't get used, right? So.
Could I comment on a few things I've heard?
Sure.
The, um, the, as far as the maintenance of the trail goes, Joshua's Trust would take 100% of the responsibility for that, both on our side of the property line as well as on the town's side of the property line. We're comfort, we're quite comfortable with doing that. We, we maintain something like 40 or 45 miles of trails already. We've got a robust volunteer pool to draw from. And I've got no doubt we can keep these in great shape with regard to brush growing up and so on. The second question, which is a very valid one, is how wet are these trails going to be? And I will tell you that the, the majority of the Joshua's Trust side of the line, there's a great big wetland in there. That's not a place I would think of putting trails. Most of the land, a good, a good portion of the land on the, on the town's portion, particularly in the north, it's high and dry. It's, it's, it's the land climbs substantially. And we would work to get this trail in, in as dry a location as we can. We're using some existing roads that are in there that look to be in pretty good shape. We had the ability, although we don't like to do it, we probably wouldn't do it unless we really had to, to build short sections of bog bridge, basically planks. We would, I think the first step for us would be to take another look at this property to see if we could put a trail in a place that would not be soggy. Because we don't want that either. Those, those are a nightmare to try to maintain.
Yeah, and to John's point, if you look at Laurel Marsh in Manchester and the Hockenheim Trail in East Hartford, there's a significant amount of wood bridges and planks that are, that are put over the trail. And I think East Hartford this year, last year got $250,000 to repair the bridges that they have. And then some of the areas of Laurel Marsh are actually closed because they're in such disrepair. So we wouldn't really want to build wooden structures to go across any of the marshy areas. So we would want to try to keep this as dry as possible.
Yep, that, that's fair. And I, I might recommend that we take a walk on this with Jeff and anybody, I guess there's a couple Jeffs here, but Jeff Murray and anybody else that wants to take a look at this to see if this could be done in a manner that, that where the trails stayed dry the vast majority of the year.
Right, this is kind of my forte, this kind of stuff. And I would like to see the trails marked and then we could walk them.
Yeah, just GPS mark them and we can walk the trails.
We would, probably the best thing we could do, Scott, would be to get out there with some flagging tape.
Flagging and ribbon, ribbon them so that we can see where the trail is going to be going.
And, and just in consideration, I would try And just in consideration, I would try to keep the trail away from the. The development to the south. And the house to the, and the houses to the east. So if we can minimize that impact, because. You know, we're going to probably have to advise these landowners that there would be a trail probably going behind their house. And if we could minimize the. Exposure of people walking, you know, close to their backyards, it would probably be much easier to put in.
Yeah. And I think, I think Jeff, we've done that to a large degree. If you look at the way we've laid out that is. It's a long skinny trail. That, and we purposely kept it out of the wetlands and we purposely kept it out of the backyards as well.
Yeah, now, now that we're into the fall, it'd be the perfect time to walk it just to see what the site impact of the visibility of the trail to the, to neighboring homeowners would be.
So I guess my take would be where we as a board would probably not be adverse to sitting there and seeing a trail. Put into that land, but we want to sit there and see what it looks like. So. If the Joshua Trust folks could sit there and work with. With the members of this board to sit there and see where it would, the trail would fall and maybe we can do that before our next meeting and then come back in our next meeting and. And make a decision.
And could I, could I basically, so if we get going on this, could I coordinate it through your town administrator if you communicate back to you? Is that the way to do it?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, just, I have a couple of things. One, I do have the butters list. For both the properties. So if the board wants to specifically inform all the neighbors. And get feedback, we could certainly do that if that's something the board is interested in doing. To open, to widen up the discussion.
I think Eric, that would probably be the next step. I think probably the first step would be probably Scott, myself, anybody else who wants to come along, we walk it. And look at the feasibility and then we can, then we can discuss the impact because I think that's kind of putting the cart before the horse right now.
Understood.
Okay.
So I would, would say a couple of things is that I've. Walked over the years, a number of the Joshua's Trust properties. So given they tend to be, you know, well labeled, well marked and well maintained. That's my personal, so I wouldn't have any issues with Joshua's Trust. Having a property and a trail in the town event. But that's my take on it. Yours may be different.
All right. So John, if you can sit there and work with Eric to schedule the trail layout and the walk around and we'll get Scott and. Jeff. Situated with you so that we can sit there and see what this trail would look like.
That, that works for us. Thank you.
All right. All right. Anybody else have any other questions for the Joshua Trust folks? Okay. We'll move on and then we'll move to item nine, the town administrator's report. Eric?
Okay, I'm going to stop this here and I'm going to share my. Screen. So. So first of all, I apologize for getting you all my report late. I'm just going to go over the highlights. We have had lately of kind of a flood of complaints from residents in the Hendy Road area. A flood being like three. From different people complaining about a number of different things, but they're all traffic related. Just to give you a heads up on that. We do have a very significant roof leak that's developed in the fire department. I did send that out to bid. There's one that seems to be pretty acceptable. With a contractor that seems to have a pretty good reputation. I'm probably going to put that out and give them the bid for it. It's under the threshold at which it. Has to go through a formal bidding process. So I think that should get done. I want to wrap that up before winter because it is an active roof leak. We are working on the RFPs for the fire department and town hall HVAC. We had a meeting with the lowest bidder contractor. We gave them a bunch of feedback on the proposal and we asked them for. A return, essentially a final proposal for both because we had some questions about locations of equipment. We are doing an additional walkthrough with him as well as the. You know, Samsung manufacturers rep. So I'm meeting them tomorrow morning to go through that. So that should be good. As you know, we went to RFP for a pathway or a multi-use path to connect the town hall. Down to the existing rail trail. So we got six bids for that initially. And at the last meeting, you. You put in place a review panel that consisted of myself, Jed Larson. As Chair of Planning and Zoning and John G, who's the town planner. So we narrowed it down to three applicants and we brought in three firms for presentations. All three of the firms I thought were excellent. But in the end, we kind of unanimously decided that. The best fit for us in this situation was Barton and Le Judas. So. When it comes up a little later in the meeting, I'm going to ask for a. A motion to hire Barton and Le Judas. We are under some pretty extreme time pressure. So I think they're going to have to begin the work before we even have a final contract because a contract will have to. We will have to deal with some state agencies regarding that contract, but we know what the price is and we know what contractor we want to hire. So we can get going with that with your permission. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. This is a fully funded project. The money's coming from a legislative authorization and we're not spending the whole authorization. So once we pick the final route and have preliminary engineering, we'll have some money over to do survey and more engineering work.
Jeff, would you like to just go over there right now? Or we have the motion up?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, I did put in your packets under that line item, which was. New Business eleven B, the packet of the presentation by Barton and Le Judas. So hopefully you had a chance to review that. If you wanted to make the motion, the motion is up, up there, you could make that motion or do something else. If you want to do it right now.
Well, let's just do it right now.
I have a, I just, this is, you, you spoke before about the starting work without a contract.
February twenty first, we have to do a lots of submission. So. This is an enormous ask. To fit this in and under three months. So yeah, the contractor is probably going to start working on it tomorrow as soon as I give them an authorization. Because there's an awful lot of legwork they could do. Whatever contract we do, you know. I'm going to make sure the town's attorney signs off on the contract before we do it. But we do have to go quickly on this one.
Can we have Dennis weigh in on that really quick? Because I have concerns about a contractor starting work on. Town, town project without APL or authorization.
Well, before you go to Dennis and before Dennis, isn't this motion to authorize them to to move forward and they're just. Doing this before they have a signed contract? Isn't that what this is about, Jeff? We're authorizing them to move forward?
Yeah, but we don't want to authorize a contractor to do any work without a contract. And I just, before, before we vote on it, I would like to.
It's usually a good idea to have a contract in place, even if it's a preliminary type, simple contract. It is good to have a few things nailed down. I don't even know what you're talking about now. What kind of a project it is?
An engineering project, Dennis.
Okay.
I would say you could probably chew up a month trying to get authorization for CHRO. And if we do that, we're not doing that, we're not going to Lotsip this year. So. The whole reason why we're pushing this is because we've got a hard deadline, less than three months. To get planning documents in place for a Lotsip application.
And there's not going to be any in twenty five and twenty six. So that's why he's trying to get it going now.
Right. I'm not saying I couldn't find some other funding mechanism, maybe. I mean, I looked at something called TAP. Which is a transportation alternatives proposal. But Lotsip is our best. Our most likely avenue to fund this.
How long would it be till you got the contract? So Dennis could look at it, Eric.
I mean, are you?
Are there any materials on the, on the packet on this?
Yes. The proposal from Barton Le Judas is in the packet.
What, under, under what? New Business?
It should be under eleven B.
While, while I understand, while I understand Jeff Murray's concern. I'm sitting there siding with Eric on an attempt to do this timely. So my, my concern are, I'll go to Jeff Murray's issue. Is there anything? Of substance that these guys, that the contractor is going to be doing? I mean, they're going to be doing survey, what are they going to be doing, Eric? So we understand just briefly.
No.
So the, the first thing they're going to be doing is giving us back. Essentially engineering opinions on two potential routes because there's really two possibilities. The first is to run this all through town property. And deal with the grade change when you get down towards the trail. And the second part is to run this down loosely down Route three sixty. So the first thing they're going to have to do is they're going to have to get in touch with all the neighbors around three sixteen and talk to them. That's the first thing that has to happen. And then they have to give us a very preliminary engineering look at both alternatives. And then we have to schedule a series of public meetings to get public interest. Because, you know, this is something that's going to be a long term thing for the town and we need as much public involvement. As we can prior to going to preparing a Lotsip. And any kind of more formalized plans. So right now, the first. You know, really between now and the Lotsip application in February. The, the goal is really public engagement, figuring out what the route would be. And getting a bulk proposal and a set of bulk costs. So we know roughly what we're going for for funding and how we would do it. Because there's two kind of very different possible routes, both with advantages and disadvantages.
Okay, so and if you go through that and you, you. The engineering firm does that, if we don't do this. If we wait until we get the contract. Your concern is that you're not going to be able to go out and get the Lotsip funding that you're talking about here.
Well, it's not that I wouldn't be able to get it eventually. But it's not going to be in this fiscal year and it won't be in next fiscal year. So we're talking about potentially waiting, you know, between two and three years to apply for funding. I was originally assuming we were going not for this year's funding cycle and we were not trying to make a February deadline. However, in talking to the capital region. The program administrator for Lotsip, his name is Satoria, told me flat out that there will not be a Lotsip submission. Application next year and there probably would not be one for the year after. So this is, this year they will allot the money that they have for the next three years. Therefore, if we're going to get in on it, now's the, now's the time to do it.
Okay.
Didn't we do a project recently where we started with a preliminary agreement? And then we moved on to a master agree, a major agreement. Wasn't that the community center?
Yep, he did do that for the community center.
Well, I mean, you can always, there's always a way to do it. But I, as, as, and I'd have to. I would have to educate myself pretty quick on what, you know, what has to be done. In this first part, you'd have to somehow come up with some sort of a price.
He has one. Fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, that's okay. I'm looking at that now. That's for the whole. That's for the whole, whole project?
You can kind of think of this as a two-phase project. The first phase.
Well, I'd like to, you're going to do it this way.
The, the first phase is to get a solid proposal through to Lotsip. And then the second phase is to use the remaining part of the hundred thousand dollars. To get as much of the engineering work we can done on the trail. Because the, while Lotsip. Potentially will pay for all the construction dollars. The town will be on the hook for some engineering costs. So the goal is basically to stretch our money as far as possible. But the reality is we've got to get the public on board with this and we got to do the public engagement. If we're going, if this is a project, we're going to get. You know, off the ground and go.
So Jeff, would you be okay with it if Dennis does a preliminary agreement with the, the engineering firm?
Yes, correct. We need to get some kind of documentation in place with deliverables and price.
Okay.
Just for the protection of the town.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Oh, go ahead, Dennis.
And it probably won't be too difficult. Okay, you've got a lot of stuff on the. The package here and I can, I can read. And I can talk to Eric and we can figure it out. We're not talking about a lot of money for the first phase, right, Eric?
Yeah, fifty seven thousand bucks.
That's the first, that's, that's all for the first phase.
Correct.
Okay. You say it's, you, you call it Lotsip, you're talking about LoSip?
No, I'm talking about Lotsip.
We say LoSip in Willimantic. Same, same, same program, but this is a.
Two, two different, Dennis, Dennis, two different programs. There's, there's a LoSip program and a Lotsip program.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. So anyway. If we make this motion, listen, just so we can move on, if we make this motion, so. Jeff, if, if we, if, if we say I motion to authorize a town administrator to sign a preliminary contract.
That's fine with me. I just, we need to put something in writing for price and deliverables.
Or at the end, you could just put preliminary proposal to be reviewed by the town's attorney prior to signing.
Well, I'd have to, I, I have to more than review it. I'm going to, I'm going to have to draft it. I, I'm going to try to do it in as few words as possible, just like I, whenever I speak to you guys.
But remember that. I cannot sign the contract and we cannot put a contract in place with them. Without this being reviewed and approved by CHRO. That's the part I'm worried about. You know, and that could take a while. It certainly has in the past. So I think if we gave CHRO a contract tomorrow, you might have a response back sometime in December. And we don't have that. So the contractor is going to have to be doing some work on this prior to us signing a follow, a final contract. That was my point.
Okay, then that's fine. But what we're trying to do is. We're signing a preliminary contract. Just, just, just to understand the timeline, we're going to sign a preliminary contract. That Dennis is going to draft and we're going to deal with the, the engineering firm. And then you're going to have a final contract that's going to go in front of the state agency for approval.
Correct.
Right? And does any member of the board have a problem with that? How it's going to work?
As long as we have the funds to cover it, I have no problem.
It's.
We have a hundred thousand dollars sitting in the bank. This is fully funded.
Okay, so. I'll motion to authorize the town administrator to sign a preliminary contract with Barton and. Legatus, I can't say that one. Le Judas? Le Judas? For the town center multi-use trail master plan and preliminary engineering. For a total of, or a maximum of fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from a legislative grant. The proposal and the final contract to be reviewed by the town's attorney prior to signing.
Also, I could, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll give Jeff Murray the second on that one. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Um, let's move on to, let's move on, Eric.
Okay, so we need to advertise for an assistant town clerk. We're hoping to do that sometime by the end of this week. Um, as far as the finance office, we're still really struggling with M and T. Um, I asked Cheryl to set up a meeting with Jewett City Savings Bank. Um, because she said there's an account. They've had some good luck with using Jewett City as a municipal savings bank. Not saying we're not gonna look at other options, but it's worth at least starting the conversation, uh, with them. Um, da, 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 we're still struggling a little bit with Barnett property and Route six. Um, we have the, an application into planning and zoning and wetlands for adding the two propane tanks behind the fire department to convert the town hall as part of the HVAC project. Um, farther in your packet, there's an agenda item to discuss animal control services. Um, and a potential to change to a shared service with Columbia and Hebron.
Can you go back to the propane tanks for a second? What's your timeline?
Um, I think it'll take me another month and a half to get through both regulatory agencies, the wetland agency and planning and zoning. Um, so I'm guessing by sometime in January, I will have permission from the three entities I need to, which is health department, fire marshal's already signed off on it. So I still need zoning, wetlands and health department.
Okay, so that gives you the permissions to do it and timing to actually get a pad board and everything in place?
Right, so what I'm trying to do is, uh, do it the next time we have a site, the site contractor in place for the community center build um, to do the trenching for the project. That's what I'm trying to do, but it's gonna depend somewhat on, on pricing. Um, you know, from them on what it's gonna cost and whether that portion goes out to RFP or not.
Okay, so you're not gonna have this in place until the spring?
Probably not, if I'm lucky.
All right, so we are, we are dealing with oil for the town hall for this heating cycle.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And we're, we're okay there?
Um, we're not in bad shape there. I mean, the current cost of oil is about what we're paying under contract. So it's not a huge difference at this point. It would be a problem if, you know, we got a big spike in the cost of oil later in the year. Um, you know, but at this point, we look like we're okay.
All right, you can keep going. Sorry.
Okay, so I talked about animal control. Uh, we did kind of not blow up, that's a bad term to use when you're talking about, uh, fuel systems. But the control and monitoring system for the, the, uh, Public Works diesel tanks has failed. We're trying to get pricing on replacing that. I mean, that was pretty old. In fact, we had to maintain an old computer with like Windows three point one on it. Um, just to use the old program, because it was a, you know, twenty or so year old control program anyway. Um, so we're still working on getting quotes for replacing that. Uh, we can still get diesel out of it, we're just, we just can't get generate reports. So we're having everybody write down how much fuel they're actually using from the manual counter. So, um, that's that bunker hill bridge design. Um, that's basically at the ninety percent design stage. They sent around the preliminary paperwork for the ninety percent design stage, which I forwarded to the Board of Selectment about a month ago. Um, anyway, that, that's, you know, tracking reasonably well. The Long Hill Bridge design is still, uh, moving towards the thirty percent design phase. And if you remember, the thirty-five or thirty percent design phase is when they give us proposals for what the actual span is. You know, what the, uh, you know, what it, what they propose for a design and how it would fit on the site. So we're still working towards that.
What are you expecting on bunker hill construction timing?
I'm guessing that they are gonna start not this winter, but the following winter, because I don't think they really have to start that, um, when it's frozen. Because they have a fairly narrow window because of the, uh, essentially, there's two threatened species, um, that have been found right in that area. And they have overlapping seasons. So there's a fairly short season in which they can do the clearing and rubbing, which is when it's frozen, so like January. Um, and I don't think there's any way we're getting to the bid process because they're probably not gonna finish the hundred percent design for three or four more months. So I think we're looking at going out to bid this summer with the contractor, starting physical construction in January. And then the bridge being closed, starting probably March with the summer construction season and reopen late that fall. That's what the design, that's what it's looking like right now.
So you're talking January of twenty twenty-five?
Correct, correct.
Can you, can you dovetail these or time these out? Where Long Hill gets done in January of twenty twenty-six?
Well. Yeah, that one's gonna proceed, you know, there's, unfortunately, there's too much out of our local control. Um, so that's gonna proceed at whatever friggin rate the Department of Transportation ends up moving it. Um, you know, I think that's more likely to be a twenty twenty-seven, uh, construction season for the Long Hill Bridge. That's my guess, based on how their projects have been running.
Okay, what, what were the two species, Eric?
Uh, one of them's a turtle and I think the other one's a bat. Yeah. Um, small bridges and culverts, we did have a long presentation today at the Capital Regional Council of Government's transportation meeting. Um, the thing I found that was interesting is that when they've tracked their data for construction between two thousand and seventeen and twenty twenty-three, the average cost of small bridges and culverts run under that program has gone from six hundred thousand to two point two million. Um, you know, per, and there's no real difference in the size of the structures that are permitting. Um, part of that is permitting costs have gone through the roof. You know, due largely to both state and federal, uh, you know, standards increasing. And the rest is the construction costs have gone through the roof. So, that's.
What, what's the cost, what's the estimated cost of bunker hill?
Around one point eight million.
So, oh, a small culvert, a smaller bridge, a smaller local culvert is now gonna cost two point two million.
You know, crazy as it's sad, now this program goes up two bridges with spans of twenty feet. Um, so, but yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's nuts, it's physically nuts, um. But, you know, we live in a pretty heavily regulated state these days. Um, uh, community center, for those of you who haven't been around, uh, the footings are in, the foundations are in. First floor flame, first floor framing is well underway. Uh, it sounds like they're planning on putting roof trusses on, um, next Monday. Um, so they'll have all the framing other than the roof completed by Monday. Um, so that project is going pretty well. Myself and Scott and Ed Sarisli toured it today. Uh, spent about an hour on site looking at the, the current construction. Um, you all know by now that the library wall was damaged. Um, we have an active claim open with Kerma. Kerma is going after the owner of the vehicle. Uh, we do have an estimate from Ron's landscaping, uh, to fix it. And we're hoping to get them in, uh, in about two weeks to get that damage repaired. Um, he thinks there wasn't any damage to the sprinkler system, it's pretty close to the line, but it doesn't look like it affected that. So it looks like it's wall and soil repair only, uh, for that. Unfortunately, it missed the crosswalk post, um, barely. So as far as the, uh, senior transportation vehicle, I did speak to the manufacturer rep uh, last week. They have actually received the chassis for it, so assembly can begin. They do have a pretty good backlog. Because they didn't get any chassis for a couple of years. Um, but he seems to think that they can deliver the vehicle first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So that's really good news. And again, that's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar vehicle at today's prices. And that is a hundred percent funded.
Right. What chassis did, are they using? You know, remember?
Not off the top of my head. I meant, I mean, I got the paperwork, I can, uh,
I'm sorry.
I don't remember, it's either Ford or Chevy. I, I honestly don't remember. Um, yeah, so as far as. But.
I'm just saying it's a very good news, yeah.
Yeah, it's nice that that finally, I mean, it is two years late, so that part's not great. But it's nice that it appears that it's actually gonna happen. Um, so the steep grant, the twenty twenty-two grant to pay for the, uh, the senior transportation like hub over on Center Street. We have made a fair amount of progress. We finally got through, uh, SHIPO, um, the State Historical Preservation Office. Um, and we got a reasonable set of requirements um, for them to agree for us to demolish the existing building. Um, I am right now working on, working to get a bid from a salvage contract to salvage the original timbers prior to demolition. Um, the one problem we're running into with that, and I put the letter in your packet, is the Department of Labor is back to saying that this is new construction or this, this is not new construction, um, so prevailing wage rules do apply. Um, I am still trying to figure out how to appeal that. Um, because it really annoys me and I think it's inappropriate. Um, I'm also trying to work in the background on a legislative solution um, to see whether we could do something about that, because that is going to increase the cost of that project significantly. Um, you know, and there's no reason for it, at least in my opinion. Um.
Dennis, Dennis O'Brien, can you work with Eric on that one and see if you, uh, can assist from a state level?
Yep, I've worked on issues like that before.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, twenty twenty-three steep grant, uh, we have, um, we've received the grant and and signed the original paperwork. Remember, we still need to go to schedule a town meeting sometime relatively soon in the next month or so. Um, you know, to be, because, because it requires a town match, we technically need a a public meeting to accept that grant. So we're proceeding as if the public is going to approve it. But, um, before we sign final paperwork, we should have a, a town meeting, um, and handle the approval for that. Um, concurrently, there is an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, you know, among things I'm asking them to do is to change the lighting regulations, because our current lighting regulations would prohibit, uh, field lighting for a soccer field. So that meeting is November twenty-first. Um, if that's something you all have interest in, I urge you to all attend the public meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission and weigh in on. Um, I suspect there will be some public opposition from the people that live nearby. Um, and there, you know, there's obviously pluses and minuses to, uh, you know, to the lighting at the field. Um, also, I think probably later this week, we should start publicizing and asking for volunteers for a committee to work on that. Uh, you know, exact amenities that we want for the field. Um.
Um, can we make that motion right now or didn't we make that motion last meeting?
Or which?
We made a motion to look for volunteers for that committee for that field, correct?
Yes, and I sent you all a, uh, what I would put out for the meeting announcement, but I really haven't gotten any feedback from the board on whether you think that's acceptable or not. Uh, but yeah, I think that's what we should, the next thing we really should be doing is soliciting more feedback. I just don't want to do that too far ahead of the actual meeting. Because I don't want to say to the public, oh, we've already decided accepting it. You know, that's really, the town meeting is the, the body that makes the decision that we're gonna accept that grant. So I think we need to do both relatively close together. So, we have had an issue down by the ball field with dog shit um, on the field and near the field. Dog poop, excrement, however you wanna call that.
Thank you.
So, couple of options, you know, option number one is simply to pass a minor ordinance and prohibit dogs from that whole property and be done with it. Um, and then try to figure out if you can actually enforce it. And then the second, you know, possibility is to bow to the inevitable and say, okay, regardless of whether we'd like to block it, we probably aren't going to be able to, so let's try real hard to keep dogs off the field itself. And then put up, you know, poop dispensers on both ends of the fields. So at least people are more likely to be, you know, uh, deal with their pet waste and it doesn't get left on the walking track or, or left in the air. Um, I know Scott and, and Paula both had, you know, have been involved in this issue. I know that's been an ongoing concern with the soccer people. Um, as many of you know, all the towns, uh, you know, no dogs allowed signs got stolen from the facility uh, down there. Uh, in some cases, the posts got stolen too. We have subsequently put back up three no dogs, uh, or no dogs on the field signs.
Uh, so, uh, Eric, we should talk about, you know, what, how we should proceed with this. I'm in favor of as, as, as much as I don't think that we should be putting up those containers for that. I believe it's probably the only way it's gonna, we're gonna make any progress on this.
Well, here's, here's what, here's what happens. The opposing team comes, they don't know that they can't bring their dog, so they bring the dog. The dog does whatever on the field. I think if you, if you keep the signs up, it's just, they're gonna continue to bring their dogs. So at least if you put a container out, maybe they'll be responsible to take care of it, but then who's in charge of emptying the containers? Is that Public Works?
Public Works will have to empty them.
Okay.
I've been in that discussion with Jay and Jay's feeling is that he ends up having to deal with the field enough that it's not, you know, they take trash from the Andover Museum once a week, anyway. They can do a every Wednesday run and do both dispensers at the ball field. He seems to think that in the end, it's probably less work than dealing with the violations and having to go pick up the dog shit on the field than.
Excrement.
Eric, Eric.
Excrement, sorry.
Come on, what?
Yeah, because if, if we keep the signs up, I mean, we don't have somebody patrolling every time there's, you know, all day. So we're, we're kinda stuck and.
I, I thought Scott raised his hand. He said he was gonna do it.
Well, the only issue is I have is it's gonna get filled with coffee cups and all kinds of other garbage, because people are just gonna throw their stuff in there. If there's no trash cans.
Well, then maybe the smart thing to, um, I hesitate to put a trash can down there.
I do too, because people are just gonna clean out their cars and throw all their garbage in there.
Yep.
Is what's gonna happen. Then, you know, what's, what's the, what's the maximum fine we can put? Is what's gonna happen. Then, you know, what's what's the what's the maximum fine we can put in for a minor ordinance?
You can't do a fine for a minor ordinance.
Is there any way we can find whatsoever for this with it without going to town meeting?
Not without a real ordinance, no. Dennis, we had this discussion.
Find somebody, I would have to say that based on my reading of the charter. You would have to go to a, you can't do it with a minor ordinance, because you'd have to set up a system whereby. Anybody who's fine has a right to go to a hearing. With a town hearing officer. We do have a hearing officer. We haven't used them yet. But uh, we might have to. And um, I I I'm hesitant to say that a minor ordinance could could, you know, I think that's. We'd have to, we'd have to change the charter if we wanted to do that.
Eric, get the price, get the price of those two units and let's sit there and carry this on till next month. Paul, are you done with, are you done with soccer right now?
Uh, I think this is the last week of practice, so there's no game, there's no games left, but. But it's not even, Jeff, it's not even the people playing soccer. It's people walking. The trail during the day or the evening when there's not a game there. It's it's multiple.
Eric, Eric, I would be in favor of adding a couple more signs and. The waste cans.
But if you have the signs, isn't that confusing?
Split message.
Hang on, hang on, Jeff, hang on. Nobody on, no dogs on the field, period. That's what it says. Okay, if they're gonna walk their dogs on the outside of the field, they have to use the waste cans.
So is the majority of this activity happening at soccer games or is this after soccer games?
I think it's, I think it's, it's both, because when when Vail's down there, he, um, Kyle's picking up stuff. At uh, before practice that night during the week. And when I'm down there for games, I see people with their dogs all the time.
I I know Ram Soccer has, you know, they they put out a thing saying no dogs on the fields whatsoever.
Right.
But is why doesn't he send out when they, when they send things for opposing teams coming, just say there's no dogs allowed on the Andover ball field?
Yeah, I mean, we can ask him to. It's you, then you have the people that don't read the email or they choose to ignore it. So it's, I mean, it's just another level of reminder. We can ask him to. But I.
You see an awful lot of other, obviously Andover residents with their dogs. You know, that walk them in that area also.
Yeah.
This is not laying at all on the soccer people's, you know, um.
Right, I see dogs down there constantly.
Yeah, it's it's during the day when when they're not practicing, it's it's all, it it's constant. But Eric, were you answering somebody's question about? How much um, these units are? Do you have a price?
Yeah, they're about two hundred bucks a pop. They're not expensive. Um, and. I think we could fund that out of the existing leftover money negativity grant. So it's not, cost isn't the issue. The issue is just what do we want to do? You know, going forward.
A lot of the poop is on the uh, track around the outside. You put another sign down on both ends of that. So when people come into the parking lot and you go onto the track, they see the sign that you have to use the dispenser. Period. If if it doesn't work, then I have no problem with having no dogs down there, but. For this, I think the the right thing to do is to allow them to. Have their dogs down there and see how they do. Right now, they leave their poop in a in a pile in a spot there.
Who's gonna fill the bags, by the way?
The the owners are.
No, who's gonna fill the bags in the stations?
I mean, and Public Works has to go down there once a week to empty it. You know, I think they can refill the dispensers. I don't see that being an issue. Um, is this a hassle? Yes. Do I really want to do this? No, but. I mean, the question is, are you? Can you enforce enough to get people to stop?
I don't.
Because I mean, there have been signs there for years. It's not that every Andover resident doesn't know. He's not permitted to have his dog in the area. It's just that they don't care.
That's the problem. They're not respectful enough to pick up their own dog poop.
They're not. That's exactly right, Jeff.
So, but.
That that is a, that is, you're putting these down, there will be people that think it's a an invitation to go out in the field. And will they go and take a bag? Will they go take a bag and will they actually use it correctly?
Okay.
That's the next question. So, okay. Are we gonna sit there and police this? Even if we gotta find, who's gonna go down there and be the poop, the poop cop? And say, hey, you know, your dog, you know, I just watched you. I sat in my car and watched your dog poop on our field and here's a fifty dollar ticket. Uh, good luck collecting that.
Yeah.
But what you would have to do is you would have to empower. The resident state trooper to do it. And you'd have to make it the fine high enough to make it worth everybody's while. So just make it a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for having dogs down on that property. Um, and give Sebastian fifty bucks of it every time he gets somebody.
There you go.
All right.
That's what I was asking about the fine amount, you know, and I I think maybe this, I think maybe the signs we could be a little stronger worded, you know, like. No dogs allowed, strictly enforced. Type of thing.
Well, that's the issue, Jeff, you know. What does strictly enforced mean?
Well, just say, you know, strictly enforced cameras in use.
Okay.
You know, because we do have.
No penalty attached to it.
Doesn't matter. It might help with, might help to deter a little bit.
Well, let let's, let's, um. Is there, uh, let's talk about this one. This was something we we're gonna have. This is gonna be something that we're gonna have to deal with over the winter, but we're gonna sit there and push it into. Um, the spring when soccer becomes more uh, active on the field again, so. Um, let let's, let's push this one off till next month to sit there and see what, um. What other options we have, because I would be interested. Jeff, in your point, if we could get cameras down there, we could get on the wifi.
We have cell phone cameras. We still have two of them.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not active right now. They're not working. Either the battery wasn't, wasn't working or somebody wasn't checking it, so.
Well, let's get them working then and let's get them up, you know, let's start. Enforcing this.
Okay, what else you got, Eric?
That's all I got. Unless you have other questions for me.
Okay. Um, anyone else have any questions for Eric and any of the topics?
No.
Okay. Um, we're gonna go move on to item ten, old business, um, ten A Community Center Construction Update. Eric, you gave that in your report. Or do you want to give anymore?
Uh, I don't really want to say anything other about that. Other than we have one issue that we're gonna need to address sooner rather than later. Um, and that is, we had the annual meeting with Karma, our insurance reps. Um, at which point they informed me that they had canceled their builder's risk policy. Um, so. Uh, up to this point, they have had a policy in place. That covers things with that cost less than two million dollars for construction automatically. Uh, but apparently they've had several really big claims against that. So they have dropped their automatic policy. I was not aware of that. So, uh, we need to figure that out sooner rather than later.
Are they giving you options?
Uh, I've I've got to file an application. Um, so, and they will cover us for building risk, but it's a separate application. So I I intend to to fill out that questionnaire probably tomorrow and get it back. Um, but I was a little annoyed to find that out.
All right, uh, ten B, um, discussion of blight and level involvement.
Yep.
Do we have anything?
I do not. That is in your packet, the update from, uh, from Jim. Um, unless you have questions for me, I'll happily relay those questions to to Jim.
Where do we stand on the Barnett property? Is he, is he uh, working to clean that up at all?
He is. But way too slow in my opinion. But the reality is he doesn't have the money to clean it up. So I think he's trying to sell that to keep it from getting foreclosed on at the moment.
Trying to sell the property?
Far as I know.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, uh, ten C, the stiff account update.
So, uh, I put this in the packet also. Um, basically, last month, October, we made about thirteen thousand dollars in interest off of the account. We currently have just over three million uh, in that account, three, three and a half million. Um, so that's been pretty successful. By contrast, from M and T. I think we got fifty one dollars in interest on their remaining money. So our plan is basically just keep the money in there as long as possible. And we should get somewhere north of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars this year by the end. Uh, of the fiscal year in interest from that account, presuming.
Thirteen thousand was over what length of time?
One month. So. Yay, Cheryl.
Yay.
Good job.
Nice job.
Ten D, traffic concerns.
Uh, so I've put this on, I talked about it a little in my report. I have had a number of people complaining about, uh. Uh, Hendy Road. I've also gotten uh, one more complaint about Lake Road. Um, and sightlines, which Jay and I are looking at to address. But I think the homeowners essentially asked us to put a mirror on the other side of the road so they could leave their property. Uh, safely, but I think the more appropriate thing is for them to just trim some of the trees that are imposing their sightlines. That are on their property. Um, so that's kind of where I'm going with that. Um, those are the only things I really wanted to talk about unless you had other. Concerns.
On the, on the traffic thing, has, have you, has anyone spoken to the uh, state on the light at Hendy?
Not in the last three or four months, no.
Haven't we got rejected for that because of the traffic concerns?
No, they haven't actually made a decision one way or the other. Um, they're still pondering it.
Okay, and they know a bridge is going up, right? It's gonna change. Traffic pattern?
Yep, they do. Um, and you know, we are pushing that as part of the. You know, we basically asked the engineering company to build in the cost of the new traffic signal. You know, as part of the work on the bridge project. Um, whether the state DOT will buy that, because obviously they're different divisions. Within DOT, but you know, that was part of our original ask. We should know a little bit more. When we get to the thirty percent design phase, whether the DOT accepted that. But if you rem- remember, we also had a standalone request. From the Board of Selectmen as the local traffic authority, uh. You know, for that.
Okay, any other?
They have not made a decision. They have made the decision that they will at some point lower the speed limit on that section of Route Six. From basically from Bunker Hill to a little past, uh, Route eighty seven. But when they get around to doing that, that's, they kind of work on their own time schedule.
Okay. Uh, ten E, a welcome sign.
So in your packet, there is the proposed sign and the visuals from the sign. And Elaine Buchard is on representing uh, the EDC, so I think she can better answer your questions for that.
Yeah, we had, uh, this is the sign that, um. That was the final. Design, it's very simple. Um, initially years ago, when we started with the sign that was gonna be similar in cost. It was way bigger and there was steel involved and it looked like the bridge and. And costs have been overrun unfortunately to the point where we could never afford that sign anymore. Um, but the spot that it's gonna go in on the little hill up. The drive to that town owned lot right next to Over and Over and across from the museum. Is um, is a good spot for it. It's basically going to be pointed mainly toward the traffic. Coming from Columbia. Um, and then, uh, uh. As it goes well and we like the sign and it looks good, then we will propose next year to go ahead and put one. Say over at the end of Shoddy Mill for traffic coming in the other direction. But with all the connectivity on three sixteen that we're working on and. And we've got the Veterans Monument and we've got all of that area there. I think it's a great spot to welcome people to Andover.
Okay. Um, has anyone looked at how that, uh. Visual at the above welcome to Andover of the bridge is going to come forth. Um, a sign on the road?
What was that question, Jeff?
So you have the bridge as a visual. A sign, and my question is, how well is that going to be seen? From where the sign is gonna be located?
Uh, it's pretty much the next thing you you see when you go ahead and come to the intersection and look left. There's the grid.
I think he.
Asking that.
I, yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Elaine, I think he, um, the concern is. I would even suggest removing it off of the sign because. It it just blends in. So the covered bridge on the sign on the top above where welcome is.
Yes.
It, it's kind of taking, it it takes your eye to look at that because you're trying to figure out what it, what it is. And it's taking away from what the sign is trying to say. So it's. Um, because when somebody's driving, I think they'll just be looking at that, trying to figure out what it is, and then they're not reading welcome to Andover. So I think Jeff's just saying, is it clear on the sign what that is? And it might, might benefit us to even take it off at the top.
Yeah, that, that actual painted bridge, it looks like is less than a foot.
Eighteen inches, two twenty inches, maybe.
Well, at the top, Jeff, it's four feet.
Yeah, the picture's not very big. It, well, it's more of, it was always a branding question, you know, because when it comes to doing signage, you've got to look into the branding. And years ago, it was kind of decided that, you know, the covered bridge basically is the most exciting thing going. For us right now in Andover when it comes to branding, but that is. What goes there is kind of what we're going to have as a branding theme. Um, I mean, certainly it can be anything. It can be anything. It's just.
I would put the crest of of the town. Uh, maybe that might stand out better. I I, Elaine. I thank you. I know you've been working on this very hard.
Oh, and.
And I know we're, now we're having a conversation about something that you've been working on for a long time. I love the sign. Um, and I I'm, I know why that's there. It's to brand it for what Andover is known for, the covered bridge.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, it just takes your, it it brings your eye to the top, so you're missing what the sign is saying, so. I don't know, I don't know how everybody, everybody else feels, but. Maybe we put the crest or whatever we call, um, what what's on the sign down at, um, Veterans Monument Park.
Uh, I I'm, I'm just gonna, this is just a personal opinion. I would remove it altogether. I think the sign looks. Um. It's an appealing sign, the welcome to Andover is established eighteen forty eight. I I know what we're thinking related to the bridge. And but I don't think it will work on that type of sign.
Hmm.
That's just me.
Yeah.
So, so we're.
As an art student, I can, I can agree with what Jeff's saying. It's, you you will not see it from that distance.
Right.
And it blends in too much.
And I, I mean, if you were gonna take that whole thing, Jeff, and and graphically design it, it can't. And I, I mean, if you were gonna take that whole thing, Jeff, and, and graphically design it, it can't be a picture like that. And if you're, you know, there's a difference to what you would attempt to do with, uh, you know, if we had somebody designed a bridge logo for us, obviously off of, it cannot be a, it cannot be a picture like that. It's not gonna work, it's me. And so i- if it was me and we were just gonna try to do this, I would take that, the image of the bridge off the sign and just say, welcome to Andover, established eighteen forty-eight. I think it looks really nice.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I will definitely discuss with, with Art, who creates the signs. Um, I'm sure, and, and I totally understand what you're saying. I do, because I, you know, just recently, there's been some signs along the road and I had to come to a full stop at a stop sign and really take a good look at it to try to figure out what, what is that sign saying, you know? And, you know, and it's, it's a picture. And, uh, so I do, I, I do think, as you're saying, and Jeff, uh, Murray is saying, a simple graphic as opposed to something that looks really actual.
I would, yeah, I would just say, I would just leave the text down there like Jeff's saying, Jeff Maguire. I would take off any, any photo or branding and I would just, I would leave it as text, welcome to Andover, established eighteen forty-eight. Um, I, I think it, I think it would look great. And then that gives more room on the sign to make the, the copy bigger. So.
Okay.
It's just, otherwise you put, you put something there that's a, um, a logo or some sort of branding. It's, you're, it, you're driving by and it's just, it's too much to try and read and process at the same time. So that's just my thought and opinion as well. So I think it's a great looking sign.
It's a great looking sign too. And then the lettering, you can get the lettering closer to a white. There's, I know there's a lot of green into that lettering, so it will blend.
Mm-hmm.
The brighter you can get those letters, the more it's gonna stand out.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, I'll, I'll work with Art.
Yeah, and, and ask him, I'm, I mean, and I know he doesn't, he doesn't live in Andover, so he can't picture where this is gonna be, but.
Oh, no, he's the one who picked it out. He's the one who, he, he's the one who talked me out of my original thoughts and said, oh, that's not gonna work. And it's like, oh, okay.
If we lighten it to a white, we'll get washed out, um, if the sun's hitting it at a certain point in the, in the day. You know, ask him what his suggestion would be for white or maybe a lighter yellow or something, so.
Because at, at one point, it was gold leaf, but, you know, that, like I said, that was more, you know, nobody can afford that anymore. Um, okay, I will.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe solar backlight, Elaine.
Yeah. Well, we did talk about that and we know we have electricity too, also right there at the parking lot and it's in, it is town-owned. So, some kind of lighting would be lovely.
Well, if the plan would be to put up two signs and one sign has electricity and one sign doesn't have electricity, solar, so, solar backlit would be, would, if he could pull it off, would be great, so.
Right, right.
But it, it does look nice. I actually think it would, um, I think it would, uh, give a nice, uh, recognition of where people are driving through.
Right. Um, and we, and we do, I mean, it is, we, we have to get it right the first time because we will continue with the coloring and the whole theme on any other signs we do.
Yeah.
So we've gotta, we've gotta get it right the first time. But no, I, I really appreciate your, uh, your input. Thank you.
Elaine, one other concern I have, it says pressure-treated post-cemented. You're probably gonna get maybe ten, fifteen years out of those, so you may want to, I don't know if we can look into a fiberglass or something else that we could cement in. Because it says pressure-treated, that's wood. So we're gonna, we're gonna cement in wood into the ground. So we probably, I don't know if we could look at an alternative to that, like a fiberglass instead of, uh, wood, because that will rot out. It will rot in time.
Yeah, I will, I will, I, I mean, I will have, you know, we'll, we'll more seriously sit down and talk to Art about it because, I mean, he's, he's been doing this for forty years and, and he's done a lot of town signs and business signs and stuff, so, you know, I kind of a- appreciate his experience and expertise on things. Um, and I know I did have a discussion because somebody did ask, well, how long are these meant to last and all that? And he pretty much said, well, they really do last quite a while. Um, and, you know, and mentioned that a lot of the signs he put up forty years ago are still fine. Um, so, but I will discuss that and get some assurances that it's gonna last.
Yeah, I just replaced wood on my porch from my house with.
Oh, yeah.
With composite fiberglass and the price is not bad and, and, I mean, they're gonna be, they're gonna be there for a hundred years.
Yeah, yeah.
So even if the sign goes bad, we still have the post there. We can put, you know, we can put another sign on the post without a lot of increased cost, so.
Yeah.
Just the thought going forward.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and Elaine, thank you for, uh, sticking with this. You've been at this for about, I don't know how many years, ten years.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Once these things are planted, that's it. I retire. No.
And so at some point, we're gonna need a sign application to planning and zoning. Um, I'm happy to apply on behalf of the town once the board is happy with, with the design and what you're doing.
Okay.
You know.
Because we've already, yeah, 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 I, I've already, already proposed it to Jed a couple of years ago and said, is this size okay? And they already did a preliminary, yeah, it's fine, follows all the rules.
You're sixteen square feet, so you're, you know, you're within the dimensions, so you will, you will get approved, but you do need to apply.
Exactly. Yeah, if, if you want to do that, that's great. Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's move, uh, to, uh, I, uh, ten E, or I'm sorry, ten F, the Stein drainage issues.
All right, so at the last meeting, you asked me to go back to the town's attorney and have the town's attorney weigh in on this. Um, I had an initial conversation, uh, with Matt Willis, who is Mark Brant's, uh, partner and who deals with this area of law more so than Mark directly. Um, he sent me back to find a whole bunch more, uh, bunch more information. I spent, uh, several afternoons going through the land records um, and found quite a bit related to it, which I then sent back to him. The thing we, we still have not located is the stipulated settlement that the previous Board of Selectmen entered into with the applicant. Um, and he basically said, without that, uh, in his opinion, it's a town responsibility. He said, if you can actually find that and get that out of the, the records, then that will clarify it one way or the other. That's the document where that should have been spelled out. Um, so far, we've been unable to do it. I know Kate has tried to get it out of the court system, uh, and we asked the old town attorney for the town of Andover, who's Finkelstein, who was in place at the time, whether he had it and whether he could get it, and the answer to that is no. So you have two options. Either the town accepts responsibility for it or I get Matt Willis to go try to get it out of the Rockville court system himself. Um, those are really the two options at this point. Um, if we do accept responsibility, um, you know, we certainly can. Um, we have an awful lot of other drainage projects. Probably what we would do is we would just make it safe with a couple cement blocks and nobody can drive on and then put it in the queue to get repaired. Um, you know, how long that will take, you know, there's an awful lot of drainage structures in the queue. So those are really the options that the town has, um, at this point. Um, do you want to burn a couple hundred hours or a couple hours of the attorney's time trying to find this? Or do you want to agree that it's town responsibility? That's kind of his, Matt's judgment on this.
So. So. I mean, the, the letter that we received that's in the packet, it, you know, I know it says town agreed to take responsibility, but you're saying you can't find any record of that?
No, so there's a lot of things that should be in the record. Um, you know, one, we should have a copy of the stipulated settlement because it clearly went to court because the Board of Selectmen clearly appealed the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. So we know that and we know, because in the, the notes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've referenced the settlement, but we don't have a copy of the settlement. And the question is, can we actually find a copy of the settlement? Because it should be in our land records and we should be able to find it in, you know, the Rockville Court um, or the Tallin Superior Court, one or the other. And so far, we've been unable to. Um, so the question is just, can the attorney go there directly and do enough of a better search with the records being on site to get that, um, or not? What should have been filed, because this would have been quote-unquote a municipal improvement. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission has standard form that gets entered into by the Board of Selectmen when we take responsibility for something that somebody else does. In other words, we, we have a subdivision. We take responsibility after it's done for the drainage system that was installed, the sidewalks and the road network. You know, we sign a formal agreement with it. That goes to a town meeting. It's accepted as a town meeting. So there's no record of us ever having done that, which there should have been if the applicant did a drainage project that was on town property. So we just don't have that documentation. Now, do we not have it because we lost it? Or do we not have it because we never got it? Um, and never entered into any agreement. Um, I don't have the answer to that. Um, so that's the best I got at this point. Um, the attorney who reviewed it said, as far as he's concerned, unless you find the stipulated settlement, the town probably owns it. Um, if you find the stipulated settlement, he said, he didn't see any reason why the town would have agreed to own that, but without paperwork to prove you don't own it, since it's on town property, essentially we own it. That would be his take on. So that's where we are.
And can't we go into the town clerk's office and understand if there was, uh, uh, when the, the, there was, if there was a town meeting somewhere in the range of June ninth, nineteen eighty-nine? That voted on this?
So you can figure that I probably spent fifteen hours in the town clerk's office going through town meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings, planning and zoning meetings, um, in every place and the land records. Um, you know, if you want to see the packet I sent to the attorney, it's about sixty pages of documentation. If you want to read through everything that's been filed relative to that, I'm more than happy to send it to you. But.
Okay. Okay.
With all that work, I still don't have a conclusion, to be honest.
So, so the question that is, there, there's two questions on my, my, my mind is, what's the cost to send the attorney to do it? And what, what's, what's the, what's the cost if we, if we vote to assume maintenance responsibility?
Um, given by basins we've done in the past, you know, you're probably looking at by the time you buy everything, because it was, it was one done by Sam Martino, so everything's gonna be, you know, you're gonna take the thing out completely. Um, you know, the pipe under the road is concrete, so that's probably okay. Um, but you're gonna assume the entire basin, you know, the sump, the riser, everything comes out and gets replaced with a modern concrete precast structure. So I think that's a couple thousand bucks to buy all the parts, probably three or four days later, realistically.
And the labor per day, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars?
Yeah, something like that.
No, that doesn't, that's, I mean, I, I'm, give me a number. Is it two thousand dollars? Is it three thousand dollars? Is it? Just give me, and I mean, I'm just looking for a ballpark so that we all can evaluate what we're doing.
Okay, assume you're gonna need three public works employees. Um, I would say ballpark, you know, three eight-hour days. So if you said twenty-five hours apiece, say seventy-five labor hours are costs by the time you average it out. You could say it's somewhere around sixty bucks an hour. Um, you know, something like that.
And, and the cost for the attorney?
Uh, presuming Matt charges us the same as Mark Brant, which I think is the case. You know, we're paying in the neighborhood of a hundred and ninety an hour, something like that, the attorney's face.
Hey, can you, uh, I mean, listen, I don't, I, I personally don't. This one bothers me because it is not, uh, it may be in the right of way, it may be in the ten-foot rule, but it does not, uh, it's not a town basin. It's not. So it's for the benefit of, of the individual homeowners and so, um, I have a problem.
Is there any repair that could be done for it, Eric?
I mean, yeah, you could take the basin top off, so you'd have to cut the, you'd have to cut the pavement. You have to take the pavement off and you'd have to take the basin top off, remove that with the backhoe. And then you'd have to repair the block wall, because those were made, in those days, they were cheaper to make them out of just, you know, masonry block and you could repair it. Um, the reason why I would suggest you don't do that is because it's at the base of a steep hill. And the real problem you have is as vehicles come down the hill, you know, they're kind of braking pretty hard just before they get to this thing. So you have a little bit more push than you normally would, which is kind of why it's failing and it's pushing in. You know, because there's essentially a braking moment going on top of it. That's my guess um, from looking at the, the failure mode. So could you? Yes. Do I think it would be smart? No. I think once you're gonna commit to cutting the top off and replacing the basin top and repaving it, um, if we are gonna take responsibility, we're better off just doing it right. Um, but I would also say, you know, I'm not convinced we don't have forty or fifty other basins as bad or worse. I mean, I would say every single basin on Ridge Road is worse than that one, you know, from a driving instructional standpoint. So, I mean, this is not something that's immediately gonna rise to the top of our priority list, but if we decide we own it, you know, we'll make it safe temporarily and, you know, we'll address it when we can.
And you can't sit there, because, I mean, I haven't looked at the driveway specifically, but, um, for the residents to get out of their driveway, they have to land on this basin. Can they avoid it?
Well, so that's a good question. I, I think we would end up at least to even make it safe squeezing them going out the driveway. Um, but if you look at the original as-built for the driveway, the as-built for the driveway had the driveway going around, not going over the basin. The basin was separate from the driveway. So at some point, they kind of widened that out anyway, uh, or they did it originally and just filed incorrect as those, one of the two. But, I mean, it's a Sam Martino job, so.
So does the board, does the board? I mean, listen, the only way we're gonna get to a, an answer is to pay the attorney to sit there and look for the documentation.
Right.
Does anybody have a problem with us not asking the attorney to go find the documentation?
If it's available, yeah. I don't have any ground for it.
You know, it'll take a couple hours. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Investment, yeah.
Okay. So I make a motion that we authorize Eric to, um, request that the planning and zoning attorneys go look for, uh, the necessary documentation at Rockville Superior Court.
I'll second that.
Uh, can I break in on this?
Sure, go ahead, Dennis.
Please, please.
Yeah.
My understanding is that those old files are not at Superior Court. They are, they are kept somewhere else in storage. And, um, And um, I don't think I've ever had to dig anything up that old, but um, I'm pretty sure it can be done. Um, I don't know how you go about it, but there's gotta be a way if the, if the file still exists. And I don't know what the retainer's rules are on files like that. But I would think they go back, uh, you know, they would have to keep them for quite a while. And I think they do. And I, you know, I could make a phone call over there. And I, 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 you know, this is, this, this whole thing is, I don't know. I don't, I don't wanna exaggerate.
So how about, how about?
I'm annoyed by this. I'm annoyed by this. Let's put it that way.
Okay, how about we do this? How about we ask you, we authorize you Dennis to look for them first?
Yeah, I think so. I, 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 you know, it won't cost you anything, I mean, to it. It will cost me some time, that's all.
Dennis, if it wasn't filed, did, if it wasn't filed, would that indicate that it didn't go through the court system?
Eric, didn't you tell me that you had a, a, a case number that you thought was missing a number?
We have a case number. Um, whether the case number is correct or not, whether it was filed correctly or not, you know, I don't know. I mean.
Where did the case number?
I'm gonna have to come over and meet with you on that, on that uh, preliminary contract you guys want. On that item we talked about earlier today, earlier this evening. So why don't you, why don't I sit down with you on that as well? I'm kind of intrigued by this thing. And um, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure. You know, I think you thought it was more of a zoning matter. But um, I don't know.
All right, so, so then.
I'm as annoyed as you all are by this.
All right, so Dennis, then let's sit there and um, uh,
I can try to help.
Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize Dennis O'Brien to sit there and do an initial search. And uh, based upon his recommendation, we authorize Eric to sit there and allow um, Attorney Willis to make a secondary search if necessary.
Second, go ahead and follow.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, all right. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay, next item is preliminary thoughts on the budget. So I put two things in the packet. The first was a uh, which has a few errors in it, which I see already. Um, a proposed budget schedule, which just gives you the dates um, that which we could uh, you know, roughly how the budget process has worked in the past um, for your, you know, awareness. And basically what that means is I agree to get you a preliminary budget workbook ready to go for your perusal around January twenty-second.
Okay, does anyone have any problems with the timeline that Eric's put in our packet?
Okay, and the second thing is, so one of the things I've done the last couple of years is kind of started from the top down. And said, okay, what are, what does the town actually do? You know, and then based on that, everything in the budget fits in a bucket based on, you know, like, so this doesn't talk about, for instance, the tax collector's office. But that's saying basically, those are the focus areas that the town has, which is education, housing and land use, transportation, community support, recreation and health, safety and additional infrastructure. Um, and the reason why I'm doing this is I'm giving you kind of a list of all the things that fall under that. So when you get the budget, everything in the budget should kind of relate back in some way or another and support one of these uh, areas. Um, and I will also give you the next month, basically, the list of the active grants. And you'll see that the list of the active grants we have also kind of supports and fits into one of these buckets. So this is just kind of a preliminary before we get into the budget. Just starting big, big picture thinking about what we do as a town. Um, and seeing whether there's anything on here that you wanna emphasize in particular um, when it comes to your funding priorities as a whole.
Anyone have any questions regarding the uh, priorities? Eric?
Okay, and then the last discussion is one of uh, so at some point in the next couple of months, um, we're gonna have to make a decision and lock in a contract for diesel fuel for the upcoming year. And also for heating oil. Um, prices right now have been up and down a little bit, but they've been running below about two ninety-five a gallon and a high of about three ten a gallon. Um, I was gonna say that if we start seeing any prices below about two ninety a gallon, that we would enter into a contract. But I still need to sit down with the public works and start forecasting what we're gonna actually use next year for fuel. So my question to you is, are you comfortable authorizing me to sign the contracts now? Or do you wanna wait till the next budget meeting and see like field projections and stuff like that? Before we start thinking about contracts? It's just a question of how much flexibility you wanna give me in terms of picking a contractor and actually signing a contract or signing.
Have you heard of future uh, prices on fuel? Heard anything from anyone?
You know, so I've been watching um, for a while. You know, globally, there's kind of two things. One globally, demand seems to be softening. Um, the real question is the instability for the fact that we have two kind of active wars going on. Um, and then where the overall world economy is going, cause those are really the two things that end up dictating the price of oil. Um, right now, OPEC has said they're gonna keep, you know, production cuts in place for at least another six months. So that tends to make the price go up. But then global demand and the economy has been going down, tends to keep prices lower. Those are kind of the two big things that, that affect it. Um, typically, historically, sometime in December is usually when the lowest prices um, for a lock-in six months out, which is a fuel contract that starts July of the fi- the following year.
I would say if you could get, if you said what you said to two ninety, cause that's like a dollar cheaper than diesel, isn't it? Your oil.
Well, but remember, we're not paying taxes. So that's, you know, the, the futures contracts have been running, they're certainly under three dollars right now. There, I think when I looked today, it was at two ninety-five, something like that. So I feel like they're gonna go a little bit lower, but they're not gonna go a lot lower. There's also a risk to waiting too long and, you know, the Israelis nuking a bunch of people and all of a sudden the prices are. So, you know, there's a bunch of global instability.
So, so what flexibility would you like from us? You had your wish.
So I would like the flexibility to sign a contract. Um, if it is appropriate, if, you know, if we have what looks like a reasonably low value for the town. So I would say anything under two ninety, you know, I'd be authorized to just sign a contract uh, when it occurs.
All right, I'll make a motion that if um, diesel fuel prices fall below two ninety, we authorize Eric Anderson to sign a long-term contract for the town of Andover.
Well, second.
Anybody have any issues? Anybody wanna comment on that? Jeff, Scott?
No, I made my comments.
All those in favor? Aye.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so you're good there, Eric?
Yep.
Okay, so we have uh, ten H and that is um, uh, ten H is uh, Andover's finest. It was added to the agenda. Uh, over the past six months, the board of selectmen has been um, reviewing candidates. And this is something that the previous, this board of selectmen has put in place to attempt to identify uh, residents of Andover who have either accomplished something of, of significance or have added great value to the community. And uh, as we were evaluating the candidates, um, we decided that we were uh, going to look uh, historically at some residents who have added value to our community and we actually selected three individuals. Um, the three individuals that we selected were um, Percy Cook, Gene Gasper and Kurt Dolling. Um, Percy Cook was a first selectman and um, he also was a town uh, roadwork foreman. Uh, he donated a significant amount of time to the, the community and also Percy Cook also donated the land that Andover Elementary School is currently located on. And we thought that that donation and uh, the work that he had done previously was uh, worthy of his nomination and moving to be selected as one of Andover's finest. Um, the second, uh, Gene Gasper, she was town secretary for sixteen years. She donated a significant amount of time to our community. She served on the board of uh, the Andover Library, Towns End Cemetery and as an active member of the Congregational Church. Uh, and she served as a church historian. Uh, Gene also was involved in the initial structure of the Andover Red Cross. So um, Gene uh, donated a lot of her time to the town of Andover and uh, we'd like to recognize her. And, and the third individual is Kurt Dolling. Kurt um, passed away recently. But Kurt was a lifelong Andover resident. He served uh, with the Andover Volunteer Fire Department for fifty-three years. He was fire chief for twenty-two of those years. Served on the Board of Fire Commission for twenty-one years and also was a member of the Board of Finance and the CIP Board. Kurt donated a significant amount of his time to Andover and to uh, assist the community and uh, we'd also like to recognize him. So Andover's finest is something we hope that um, our board will continue with and we will sit there and identify other individuals with the town that need to be recognized. Uh, we're working toward uh, evaluating how to memorialize this and to, uh, we're looking at the uh, Andover Community Room is, is somewhere where we can actually uh, do this and uh, uh, we're hope to make this more of a uh, something that goes forward for a long time. So those are the three individuals that we would like to recognize and we all believe they've brought significant uh, amounts of themselves and value to the town of Andover. So. Anyone else on the Andover's finest from the board? No? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move on to uh, new business. Uh, eleven A Animal Control Officer Discussion.
Okay, so I put in your packet a potential memorandum of understanding um, that eventually would be between the town of Andover, Columbia and Hebron about kicking in and doing essentially a three-town regional, regional animal control uh, facility and animal control officer. As most of you know, we use uh, NCOG's Animal Control Officer and Service Now. Um, the problem is that we're well beyond their real effective range. Um, so I don't think we've really gotten particularly good service from them in terms of time. And they're very limited in what services they provide the town. So we started off about two years ago with the capital region and we uh, one of the things that we suggested is capital region submit what's called an ARPI grant to the state, which is basically a regional performance incentive. So in other words, the, the, we've got state funding to kick this thing off and get it uh, up and running between three towns. Part of the reason that's needed right now is the new regulations regarding animal control facilities um, make it much more difficult to comply with state law. Like our facility would, we would basically have to scrap it and start over with an animal control because there is nothing about our facility that complies with the state law. Not the septic, not the fencing, not the structure, not the HVAC, um, none of it is compliant. So um, we're kind of out of luck, but both Hebron's and Columbia's facilities can be modified to meet what is current state law for that. Um, so what this proposal would do would be to transfer from us using NCOG as providing animal control services to uh, a shared one between the three towns. Now, the downside of this is that while initially it's about the same cost, it's only the same cost be- because CROG is uh, funding it through the grant program. Um, in the end, it's gonna be, you know, somewhere around six thousand dollars a year more than what we're paying now through NCOG, depending on where they are in terms of pricing increases the next couple of years. So I wanna put it out for discussion. Um, because sometime in the next couple of months, if we're going to go this route, we're gonna need to budget for it and the other towns need to know we're on board. Because that's may depend on whether they're able to go forward with this also. So anybody have any initial uh, questions or concerns with this approach?
Do we have any options?
The only two options that I can see right now are staying with NCOG or this is the only other real option that I can see us doing. Um, because at the end of the day, you know, we could potentially find our own animal control officer. Um, you know, although getting twenty-four seven coverage would be difficult. But what we can't do is we can't come up with a compliant animal control facility to take the animals to. Um, because we're just too far out of date on our facility. Um, and I gotta think it's, you know, a pretty expensive proposition to build a whole new animal control facility. So, I mean, to me, it seems like our two reasonable options right now are to stay with NCOG or to establish a joint facility with uh, um, you know, with Hebron and with Columbia.
So what are you really asking us for? Permission to continue down the road?
I mean, I wanna get feedback from you. Because if we're going to do this, we're gonna have to make decisions fairly quickly, cause all three towns are gonna be in budget seasons, you know, pretty quick. And Columbia and Hebron are gonna have to know whether they're, cause all three of us are doing different things right now. Um, Columbia is in a shared agreement with four other towns, but not near here. So they're in the same boat we are. Um, you know, we're with NCOG and Hebron is kind of doing their own thing. So what this basically involves is Hebron upgrading their facility um, to be the primary, you know, animal control facility. Columbia upgrading theirs, but just as a backup facility um, in case we get overwhelmed, which happens from time to time. Um, and then, you know, us not, you know, us not, Andover not having its own animal control facility. And then us basically just paying for this as a shared service. But in future years, the cost, in the initial cost basis will be just on a per capita basis. But then going forward in a year or two, once we have data, the cost to the town will be. the cost to the town will be based on the average number of claims, you know, in each relative town. So essentially, how often the animal control officer has to get called out for Andover stuff?
And do you have those statistics right now?
Not really. I mean, you know, we have some statistics from all three towns, um, but we don't. It's not really comparing apples to apples because, so our current animal control does not respond to any nuisance wildlife things. Um, doesn't really respond to anything other than, you know, basically dogs, domestic dogs running around. Um, you know, they don't deal with cats. Um, they don't deal with any rabid animals. So i- in the other two towns currently have much more comprehensive services than Andover. So trying to figure out what our relative numbers are versus theirs are difficult right now.
Well, I'm in support of shared services on something like this. I just don't want to sit there and see our expenses raised too significantly. But again, I asked the same question. What options do we have? We really don't have any options because to be compliant with the state, we'd have to upgrade our facilities.
Or stay with NCOG, but just accept the current level of services. So I look at it this way and say what potentially we gain is faster response time because an animal control officer is likely to be closer. Um, and a greater range of services provided, you know, by the animal control officer than what we have now. Um, you know, in exchange for probably somewhat higher costs. But I don't have a firm cost estimate for what, what we're getting charged per capita next year. Any.
Is the
NCOG either.
Is the public calling Town Hall and complaining that we're not offering services that we would get if we did the shared service?
I mean, we've definitely got a bunch of complaints about rabid animals um, that we haven't really had any good mechanism to deal with. Um, you know, other than call the state police who generally don't respond to that anyway. Um, so we've had some complaints. I don't, I'm not saying my phone is ringing off the hook with complaints, but I do get complaints from that from time to time.
But if we pa- but you're also saying if we pass up on the shared service, in the future, we might not be able to join with them. So what if we stay with NCOG? And they, they join together. Do we have the option to join in in a couple of years?
Possibly. Um, yeah, I mean, us not being willing to join this year doesn't mean maybe we couldn't ever join. But the, the problem comes in is that part of, of this thing is if you're actually gonna staff it, um, you need essentially, you need twenty-four, you know, you need coverage around the clock. At least somebody willing to respond twenty-four seven. And the economy's of scale with that go up. So I'm not sure this really is viable without the town of Andover. Because even though we're not the majority of the costs, you know, we're still a, a chunk of the costs associated with this project. Um, frankly, I don't know whether Columbia would opt to give up their existing arrangement um, without the third town. Um, so.
And what's, what's the timing on this? When, when do they want us to make a decision if we're gonna join them?
Well, all three towns are going into budget season, so all, all of those towns need to know whether this is gonna work, whether we're gonna do it or not. Um, you know, we've been working on this for, you know, a year or so, well, longer if you take the grant portion of it. Um, but you know, and, and part of it has been one of the kind of drivers has been the fact that the uh, the cost to update the facilities, you know, a year ago, we weren't really talking about the cost of updating facilities. You know, we would have spent that portion of a grant on a vehicle for the in- animal control officer. But now, you know, both those towns are looking at pretty significant investments to make their facilities compliant, uh, you know, to current state law. Now, Hebron's gotta make the investment anyway because they don't have any partner. They've always had their own ACO. So they're going to make their facility, you know, but uh, did that answer your question? Sorry.
Did CROG get the uh, funding specifically for the three towns?
Uh, initially, Andover was one of, I think about six towns um, that was, had expressed interest in shared uh, you know, shared services for animal control. But the other three towns are not in this portion of the state, and it doesn't look like they're going to go through with it. So the grant money is sitting out there, and we're gonna spend majority of the grant just on our three towns. Um, so basically what happens is the grant offsets seventy-five percent of the cost of running the facility the first year, then fifty percent and twenty-five percent. So it's basically your, your fourth year, you're paying the full bill from there on. Um.
So of these costs, how much of this is facilities upgrade? How much is just regular expenses?
Uh, if you look at the A Exhibit Cost Share, the column that says facilities upgrade is the cost, um, the combined cost for the upgrade. So there's about eighty thousand dollars built in for facilities upgrade costs, the majority of which are grant funded. And then each of the three towns pays a prorated portion of that based on population. So of the eighty thousand, our hit is about thirty-five hundred for the facilities.
Well, what, what is the take of the board as far as this?
I think it's a, a better idea. That NCOG facility is out by the Rhode Island border, terribly long distance up there. To have somebody that's close seemed to me like it's a better idea.
So Eric, it just, just as if we look out into the future, we're sitting there saying our portion of the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year would be fourteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars.
Correct.
And that the cost that we're currently spending is?
So I looked at that. We're currently spending just under twelve thousand this year.
Okay. And, and we're, we're assuming we're gonna get an increase from them anyway to some extent.
Presumably, presumably. I mean, you know, this year's increase was like seven and a half percent. So I, I can't really predict what that increase is going to be. Um, yeah.
Okay. Well, based upon those numbers, I, I really would sit there and say we, we should continue to go down the, the route of the shared services agreement. So.
I agree. And we're getting, get a better service too.
Exactly.
Well, the, I mean, that's the whole reason why I'm kind of cautiously in favor of this is because I think we should have somebody to deal with, you know, rabid deer uh, or rabid animals, and we should have somebody, you know, when somebody injures a deer and it's flopping around on somebody's state, uh, front, somebody's front lawn. You know, we should have an animal control officer to address that. Um, and we just don't have that with NCOG. NCOG is very narrowly interpreted their range of services. Uh.
So what do you
Perfect example was uh, somebody down at the lake last week, right? That had an injured deer.
Yeah.
So. So if this, if this helps us with our services and gets the residents a better product for the, you know, for what we're spending, that's, then I'm all for it.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion?
Eric.
Need a motion?
I, I would make a motion to, you know, to authorize me to pursue it. I mean, I'm not gonna sign a final contract until I have a, a final contract to bring back to you. But this is the bones of a, a regional shared contract. Um, we're supposed to be meeting again Friday. Um, all three towns are bringing it back to their board, so presuming the other two towns are on board, you know, we'll keep proceeding and try to come up with a final set of documents.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we authorize Eric to pursue uh, the regional service contract for animal control services.
I'll second.
All right, all those and, for the discussion, none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, eleven B, um, select a contractor for the town multi-use Trailmaster Plan? We did that.
Eric, you did that?
Right. Um, eleven C, vendor permit for Sunrun?
Yep.
Has that been done?
Uh, there is, should be in your packet, an application uh, for uh, a vendor permit for Francesca Brown, who is seeking a, you know, a vendor permit through the town. Um, and ultimately per our charter, that's a town board of selectmen decision. So she is a salesperson from Sunrun. And there for
And didn't we just, didn't we just do this for someone else?
Yep, we did.
Same, same exact type of permit?
Yeah, different company, but same, same concept.
Same concept.
Yep.
And so this is the same fee, same structure?
Correct.
Okay. Um, anybody have any problem with this?
No.
All right, I make a motion that we uh, approve the town of Andover vendor permit for uh, Francesca Brown representing Sunrun um, starting November. When would we start the permit, Eric?
Uh, uh, you could start it whenever you want. It started November fifteenth. Run it for one year, starting November fifteenth.
Starting November fifteenth for one calendar year. Or, sorry, for, for one twelve-month period.
Yeah.
Anyone second that? No?
I'll second.
Well.
We don't need to vote on it. Paul, a second. All those in favor?
I was waiting for Scott.
All right. Okay, uh, done. Um, uh, we uh, deleted eleven D, the uh, appointments to CIP and the Senior Center Building Committee. Um, eleven E, dogs at uh, Veterans Monument Park. We discussed that already. Eleven F, parking enforcement on Hutchinson Road. Eric?
Uh, I think Jeff Murray asked for this one to be on. Um, there's been some concern uh, expressed about parking um, on Hutchinson Road by the Buddhist uh, temple goers uh, when they have events.
So I guess I can speak to this. If we remember, we got a, we had an application probably two months ago over for a, for an event, and it came in probably five days or ten days before the event was supposed to start, and you know, we, we do require ninety days for these, these special event permits. And um, a resident had actually uh, stopped me one day when I was driving to work and gave me an earful about it and said, you know, they're, they're really nice people, but they're having large gatherings on Hutchinson Road, and there's, you know, I'm, we're talking three to four hundred people and hundreds of cars. So I don't know if the board wants to take any action about uh, this activity that's going on and, and they, the failure to file permits on time and, and the parking on the road. So I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that it is going on. Uh, we had a similar incident on Shoddy Mill with a, with a church that was operating out of somebody's home and a large amount of people that were parking there. It's not that we don't want to st- we want to stop them from having their events, but they need to follow the process, and they need to file their permit paperwork on time to have these events and and just if an event happened on that street, um, and uh, something happened, an accident, a medical emergency. I mean, our fire department is unaware that there's that many people, and the, the road is actually congested with so many cars uh, on that roadway. I know it is a dead end, but uh, we should probably advise them that they need to follow the process when they are gonna have these large events at the, the property on Hutchinson Road.
So I, I did, yeah, I, I did a little research on this and um, just doing some, looking around on Facebook. So they have a, they have a Facebook page, and they're, they're promoting their events on Facebook, and there's some videos out there of um, the events. And uh, it, it's a large group of people, so it's not like, you know, twenty, forty. Um, we've got some videos that we can look at for um, information. So I've got those videos if anybody wants to take a look at them, so.
Okay, Eric, have you had, um, have you had any specific complaints about this?
Uh, I have not. Um, I have told them multiple times that they need to submit their permits, you know, ahead of time because they have, had a bad habit of not doing that. Um, overall, they seem like a friendly group. They have applied for uh, nonprofit status. I have, we have also told them in no uncertain terms that they need site plan approval from Planning and Zoning Commission uh, because they are in effect acting as a church. Now, a church is a permitted use because that is a commercial zone. So there's nothing at all that precludes them from doing that, but they need to file the site plan, and supposedly they are filing the site plan with Planning and Zoning. Um, in which case it will be reviewed by Planning and Zoning. I'm sure one of Planning and zoning's issues, because it always is, is parking. So that's something they're gonna have to address as part of the uh, any site plan approval for that property.
Okay, um, so you are in communication with them, and you, you have access to them to talk to them about permits and timing and everything else that's required.
I mean, I've talked to them a few times. I mean, I don't, I'm not saying I talk to them on a regular basis. Um.
And, and the status of the culvert on Hutchinson Road?
Still bad.
That's the problem. That, that is the problem.
Well, to be honest, that is something that concerns me um, long-term with that much traffic on the road is that, you know, short of that, um, I would say that has a priority of zero in terms of replacement. Um, but with them there, you know, we are looking into whether we can connect um, to the other end of the road and just access it directly across Route Six and basically abandon that culvert completely. Um, in fact, remove it. Uh, because I think in the long run, that's cheaper to the town than trying to fix the bloody thing and spending, you know, a million and a half plus dollars to replace that culvert. Um, which crazies, the seems to be the going rate for those things.
Yeah, that would, that would, that would be a disaster if there were two hundred cars on that and that culvert gave way. That would be terrible.
Not necessarily, because they still, remember that that property has direct, a direct driveway on the Route Six. You know, which is one of the reasons why I haven't You know, which is one of the reasons why I haven't been overly concerned about, you know, fire and ambulance access, because A, where they're parking is in a cul-de-sac, which there are no houses back there behind it. And B, the location itself where the, the temple is has a direct access on the Route Six. So you can, an emergency responder, first responder can get directly to that property. Although, could they get through the property and then get out the road? Um, if somebody had a heart attack, for instance, back in the cul-de-sac, the answer is probably not. Um, so there are definitely some concerns there that would need to be addressed.
There's, there's one house there that has to go over that, over Adam's house.
Yep.
Right, and then the farmer goes in, that's their main way into that varway.
Right. But whether they come in that way, whether they come in directly off of Route Six.
There's no, there's no, unless, where are you assuming that they would come in off of Route Six?
I would come in near where the existing uh, dead end cul-de-sac turnaround is. But not quite that far, if that makes sense. And I, you know, I, I walked to that with the town engineer and talked about the pluses and minuses of it. And what we're trying to do is get a meth, a meeting with DOT um, to get them uh, whether to, to see whether that's even feasible. You know, whether DOT would consider it, because that would make our lives a lot easier. And it's a heck of a lot, you know, uh, less costly if we get permission from DOT to do it, then it would be to repair that culvert.
Right.
So, so just as a, um, let's sit there and see, well, well, let's, Derek, I would ask you to go to the, to the residents and ask them to file their permits earlier so that we're aware and that everybody is aware of what's going on. And um, if they don't do it, then Jeff, maybe we go back and we explore what parking enforcement really would be about related to that property.
Well, Jeff, we had, we had denied that permit that they had filed, I think, two months ago, and they still held, they still held that regardless.
I'm sure.
So it's just, it's just, it's just an equal playing field for everybody in town. If, you know, we can't expect people to file permits for special events if we're not enforcing, you know, uh, non-compliance with this resident.
They have an event down there almost every three weekends.
Yeah.
But, but they're applying for status as a nonprofit and as that we're not going to have any, I mean, they're in a commercial zone, are we going to have any? What is our enforcement going to be related to that once they apply, Eric?
Well, I mean, if they get site plan approval, then they have to meet the conditions of site plan approval. But to this date, we don't have any, we don't have any zoning fine ordinance in place. Um, and we don't have a permit fine, you know, in place. Um, we still need to get Dennis to draft that, and then we got to go to town meeting and get the town to approve that. You know, and then you can find them for violations. Right now, we don't have any real enforcement method, other than taking them to court. And we're probably not going to do that.
I think the solution with the Shoddy Mill issue was putting up no parking signs. And if we just did that on maybe one side of the street, just to kind of keep the roadway open, uh, that may be acceptable. I mean, they're parking almost down to that culvert that is damaged. There's a lot of cars on that road. I mean, they're not, it's, 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 it's not about the people or anything, it's just about following the rules and making sure that they file their permits um, before these events, that's all. And we've been getting them late for years now and they basically ignored, you know, our permit procedure.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking right now, there, there was some that have been.
They probably are breaking up.
I agree with Jeff. We just, we got to set a standard that, you know, everybody's
Follows.
Just got to follow the rules of what the town's, yeah.
So if we put no parking signs up on one side of the road, can the state trooper issue tickets? Eric, asking you.
Um, I don't know. Dennis? Or does that work for an ordinance? Do we have a?
The uh, parking authority in town. Is it the board, is it the uh, first selectman?
No, the Board of Selectmen acting as a whole is the local traffic authority.
Well, well, there's a per, traffic authority is a parking authority. I think.
We don't have a parking authority.
Well, you do, you, you have, you do understand, well, I just don't know who it is.
It's us. So let's say it's us. Let's say it's us. If we, if we authorize Eric to put up no parking signs on one side of that road, can the state trooper issue parking?
I'm not sure, did you, uh, I, I, I don't know, but it, anyway, go ahead.
That's it. That's all I'm after, because if Jeff Murray's solution is, is the correct one, which is put up no parking signs and they, they have an event without a permit issued. Right? You're protecting the culvert, which to me is the biggest issue, because if the weight of all those vehicles collapses that culvert, then we have other problems.
What, what are they doing over there? Is it church?
Um, it's a, um, uh, yeah, let's sit there and say it's a Buddhist church.
Okay. And uh, they have hundreds of cars parking there?
I would say, I would say over a hundred.
Over a hundred?
Correct.
I'm not familiar with the, with the, with the street. Sure, I know who it's named after.
It's a, it's, it's, it's parallel to Route Six.
Hutchinson Road.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's very little, there's very little homes on it, very few homes on that road.
Yeah.
So, anyway, anyway, what, there, there's, this is something that we're going to have to address and come up with a better solution. I don't think we're going to, we're going to get to it tonight. But we're going to have to figure that one out. So if.
Now you have three things, Dennis.
Yeah.
Uh, no, that's, that's four, I think. But, but, but anyway, uh, you're, you're, you're loading me up again. That's, that's, that's okay.
Sorry, Dennis.
I gotta get over there.
Well, maybe talk to the, maybe talk to the church owner and just ask them if they could, you know, park on one side of the street instead of both sides and maybe keep it open a little bit more, right? Just as a solution before, you say, hey, if you know, you guys don't uh, comply, we're going to have to take some enforcement in the, the parking situation.
Well, you certainly need to keep them from parking on uh, that culvert. Oh, that sounds like a real problem to me. But I'd like to see the area and uh, I just, I sent uh, Eric a text earlier, I'd like to get over there and meet with him on this contract thing. Among, uh, among other things, and uh, spend the day over. And Andover, Eric, if you have time this week, I can't do it tomorrow, but Wednesday or Thursday would be good for me.
Pa- parking on the road is not going to be part of the planning and zoning. They have to have their own parking.
Well, but remember as part of a site plan review, you should be establishing what the correct number of spots are for a facility like that and requiring them to comply with that.
That's what I'm saying.
They shouldn't necessarily be taking up the whole road to park there. They should be accommodating parking as part of their application or apply to the town and, you know, ask the town for permission to park on the road.
Because they're not going to have room to park a hundred cars up on that property.
Okay. So Dennis, if you could uh, work with Eric and just sit there and see.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm glad to. I just need to get over there and I, 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 if you're dealing with any kind of uh, land or anything or roads, I, I really need to see it. I don't live in town. And I'm not familiar with it. Um, I can't, I can only just, you know, guess that what it looks like and I think Eric's, Eric's right about zoning, uh, that's a good, uh, you know, they will have to file a site plan and maybe the zoning officials can help. But uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, I'll just put that on my list.
All right, um, we're going to move on. Uh, is there anything that I'm missing in our additions and deletions to that section eleven? I don't think so. Um, we're going to move on to item twelve, approval of the minute meetings for October tenth, twenty twenty-three. I make a motion to approve the minute meetings for the October tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye? Okay, uh, tax collectors report refund requests office policy for delinquents.
Okay, there is a tax collector's report in there. And there is also one, two, three, four uh, tax refunds uh, that total two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
All leasing entities or banks. Yes, go ahead, Paula.
I make a motion to uh, send out the tax refunds uh, listed in the packet for two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars, sixty-six cents.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye? Okay. So the delinquent policy?
So, there's a policy in there that came from Kate. Uh, she's in the midst of going through all her trainings to be a uh, fully certified municipal tax collector. Um, she and I had a discussion about um, what up to this point has been done incorrectly in that office and what needs to be done to protect the town's uh, collection abilities going forward. So that's what she's saying that she's going to implement as a policy. Um, we also have had a uh, a conversation about when and where it's appropriate to, to be more aggressive with tax collection. Um, you know, because I, I think, I mean, if you looked at the master list, there's like three hundred pages of delinquent taxes in one form or other, but a lot of them are very small amounts. And heroic measures to collect the last couple of bucks is not worth it, but we certainly ought to be going after kind of the bigger offenders. Um, the previous tax collector's argument was essentially that the reality is it's the best loan in the business, because every bit of that unpaid taxes is accruing eighteen percent interest. So even if it takes you ten years to collect, in the interview, meaning time, you're making a lot more money off of it than if you collect it upfront. I mean, there's some merit to that argument too. Um, but this is what she is planning on doing. Um, you know, um, she wants to go after, certainly for personal property, much more aggressively. Um, the alias tax warrant um, gives a state marshal the ability to actually seize bank accounts and seize assets to pay the taxes. So understand if we do that, um, that is a fairly aggressive uh, move on the part of the town. But, you know, maybe warranted.
What's our cost?
What?
What's our cost related to that service?
So we don't pay for it because the state marshal tax on his fees on top of whatever they owe us. So we get our money and he gets his money and whoever owes the money pays a lot of money. Is how I would describe it.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with those policies and procedures? I'm all for it.
Okay, so you are essentially signing off on the preliminaries for doing a delinquent uh, tax sale going forward for real estate, which would take place sometime, probably in the spring at some point.
Did I ask you, uh, Eric, uh, I've never recall any tax sales being done while I've been there that I was aware of, but I'm sure you must have done some.
Yeah, we have. I know I missed here, planning and zoning, the last time it was done, so I'm guessing it was around two thousand seventeen was the last time we did one, so it has been a while.
Okay, there's an attorney in.
We've done a couple, we've done a couple. Donna, Donna was the tax collector, the last time we did it.
Because I went to the last, yeah, last two.
Yep, and so.
Adam Cohen?
Yes, yes.
Owen's always that guy.
He's very good at what he does. He specializes in that. And uh, like with the alias tax warrant, um, you know, his, his fees comes out of the proceeds from the tax sale. So it's, it's, it's a good, uh, it's a good way to deal with it. And I, I, I know Adam very well, and I've worked with him in many other towns, and he does a wonderful job. So that's the way to go. The only other thing you need, she needs to know, and she probably knows it already, is that I believe uh, tax liens are only good for fifteen years. And you can't wait. There, there's a certain, there's a statute of limitations on it. And um, I'm sure, I'm sure she's aware of it by now.
Right. We'll sit there and um, you know, with the procedures that she's putting in place, let's continue to develop processes that we can sit there and improve upon, so let's keep moving on that road.
So you're okay with this basic plan for enforcement and more enhanced collections than what we've been doing previously?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm sure you will get a bunch of pushback from a lot of people once we start doing it. So I'm just making sure you're aware that we're doing this, so when you start getting people complaining. Um, because when people get their bank accounts seized, they will be bitching.
Well, pay your taxes and then you won't have to listen to us, or you won't even have to talk to us, right?
I, no doubt, no doubt.
We'll deal with it when it comes. So, uh, department reports, or there, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention?
Uh, nothing really major that I want to bring to your attention. Um, the reports are there in the packet.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with anything that was on any of the reports? Okay. We'll move on to item fifteen, any correspondence, Eric?
Uh, no.
Um, I'm going to shift public speak up because I'm assuming we still want to uh, go into executive session over personnel contracts, is that accurate, accurate?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So we'll move on to public speak, which is item seventeen, and we'll do that beforehand. Um, Diane Granier, you're first.
Looks like I'm probably one of the only ones that left on here.
We got three.
I've been very patient. Um, I don't have a whole lot to say. Um, I, I'm always uh, impressed and wowed by the number of topics and the, um, that you guys have to address every, every month and uh, I applaud you. I think you guys do a good job. Um, I'm sorry that Elaine Bucard is not still on here. I had a comment about the sign, um. And, and I don't know if it's too late to change it, if you guys even agree, but the um, the sign at the monument park is that cranberry color with the tan lettering. The one at the library right down the street just took um, note from that, and theirs is also that cranberry with the um, tan lettering, and the church has got the, the white congregational church with the cranberry um, banner on the top, again, keeping with the library and the monument park and maybe the, the town sign should follow that same thing, since it's on the same street, all within a, a half a mile. Um, have it be basically the same color scheme rather than going with the green.
Okay. We will sit there and make her aware of that possibility, so.
Yeah. Because for, for, for whatever it's worth. And that, that was basically my only comment. And thank you again, guys, for all, all you do, and ladies, um, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
All right, um, Joanne, Joanne Ebert left us. So Anne Kremay, you're last. Is your microphone working?
Can you hear me now?
Yay.
I changed from the computer to the tablet and got that to work. Yeah, I, you know, listened to everything and, um. My only thought was also about the sign in that, the, the, welcome to Andover sign. And most towns seem to put the signs. Near the town line. So when people first come into town, they see the sign. I didn't know. Why we weren't considering doing that instead of putting it in the middle of town. So that was the question. And I've even noticed. Going into Columbia on Route eighty-seven, their welcome to Columbia sign is before you leave Andover. It appears to be still in the town of Andover. It says, welcome to Columbia. Which is sort of an oddity, but I would think that we should put our signs just over the town line and put them on Route Six in two places, maybe three sixteen and eighty-seven. I know it means more sign.
I think the thought was when Elaine shared this a couple of months ago, um. When you're driving on Route Six, she figured the, the spot that was suggested, uh, that we talked about tonight. Um, it's close to where the park is. And the, um, you know, kind of like the, our center of town, so to speak. So she, and she figured. It would be more, um, you could read it better in, in that area rather than when Route Six is just a fast. Um, uh. People pass on that fast, so you wouldn't even notice it if you're going at the speed that you would on Route Six. I think that was her. Um, her thinking on the placement when she shared that in the beginning, so.
But it sounded like they're thinking of putting more signs in in the future maybe.
So the, the E D C very much wanted to put in. At least three signs. They wanted to put one in on each end of Route Three, Route Six and then one on three sixteen. Um, this is probably the sixth or seventh year. The E D C has approached the town for funding for doing this. And this is the first year the town finally approved some funding. And it happens to be enough basically to do one sign. So that's, they kind of scaled back their proposals from what they would have liked to do. To what the town will actually pay for them to do. So I think that was the. Um, the reason why they chose to go a little bit more closer to the center of town. Um, and I'm not, I'm not on the E D C, so I have no dog in the hunt where the thing goes. Um, as far as I'm concerned, it goes wherever y'all want it to go.
All right, Anne, thank you very much and, uh. Make sure your microphone works for the next meeting. Okay, um. I think that's it. Um, I, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session. To discuss personnel contracts and invite in Eric Anderson and Attorney Dennis O'Brien.
And my suggestion would be you invite in, uh, Anne Kremay, since she's going to be here when the contract's good signed.
All right, I'll invite in Anne Kremay as well.